My name is Richard Katz. Thank you for coming out to this hearing. I know it's a dismal day outside. We're working on getting some refreshments. I don't know if they're here yet, because I know that it's going to be like the hearing. Okay, it's on its way, and I know it will be like the hearings. So we're going to start with two very short items first before we get to what I know most folks here are for. So we'd like to get them out of the way. May I begin? Can you start with the first item?
Call your item number one, ULER number 1-0-0-4-2-1-DFQ. Related item, ULER number 1-9-0-1-5-1-C-R-Q. The applicant is Acton L.L.P. and Community Board Number One.
Good morning, Borough President Katz. My name is Bryce J. Jopp from Acton L.L.P., appearing on behalf of the applicant, property owner, Cipico Construction Incorporated. I have a brief presentation describing the project, joined by other members of the project team, that can answer questions after the presentation. Cipico Construction Incorporated presented that proposal several land use actions to facilitate a large-scale general development. I have an underutilized non-conforming, higher block site located in 3201 Vernon Boulevard in Queens, Community District One. These proposed actions would facilitate the development of three mixed-use buildings at five, nine, and fourteen stories with 330 units, ninety-two of which would be mandatory inclusionary housing units, new local commercial community facility space, cellar-level parking garage, and landscape public and private open space. The vision of the project, which you'll see in the following slides, is to redevelop the site for new housing, local retail, food beverage uses, and community facility uses, creating a linkage to waterfront parks and surrounding cultural institutions. This slide identifies the proposed rezoning area. It's shaded red, which is bounded by Vernon Boulevard, Broadway, and Eleventh Street, which are all wide streets, Thirty-third Road, and Tenth Street, which are narrow streets. The site is approximately 77,000 square feet, about 1.77 acres.
May I interrupt you for one second? If I could ask my staff to do something about the sound system? Any echo that happens or the buzz that's happening when people speak into the microphone? While you're speaking, I want to interrupt you. That would be very helpful. Thank you. And everybody, if you could put your phones on vibrate, that would be helpful as well. Thank you.
The site is zone R5 in 1961, but despite the residential zoning, the area is predominantly developed with non-performing industrial and commercial uses. The site is currently underutilized and acts as a void between the active commercial, cultural, and recreation uses to the west and south, which draw visitors, and the surrounding area. The surrounding area also does a way of local retail and service uses to serve visitors and residents of the area. This slide shows the three land use actions that are sought. The requested actions, including zoning match and zoning tax amendments, and a special permit for large-scale general development, will facilitate the development of a new mixed-use, mixed-income project with a site plan amassing that will fill the existing void and lead the site into the surrounding community. The rezoning would establish an R7X-C24 zoning district on the majority of the site, which is shown in the upper left-hand corner of this slide. And so it's an R7X-C24 on the majority of the site, and an R6B zoning district on the southern edge of the site. The tax amendment establishes the mandatory inclusionary housing program at the entire project site, and the special permit imposes the large-scale general development controls. The large-scale general development will restrict the project to the proposed site plan in bulk envelope, meaning what we have submitted, if approved, is what the applicant has to build in the declaration that would be reported against the property. So again, this is the proposed development. It includes three mixed-use buildings, a five-story building at the southern end of the site, a nine-story building at the center of the site, and a fourteen-story building on the northern edge of the site. Commercial space would be provided along Vernon Boulevard frontage, and there would be community facility space in each building. In the cellar, there'll be a 166-space parking garage, which is accessible from Eleventh Street. And there's also approximately 16,000 landscaped public open space on the southwestern corner of the site, Tenth Street, Thirty-third Road. Here are renderings of the proposed development. The top left is a bird's-eye view of the development. The top right is the Vernon Boulevard frontage, that's shown in the largest of the three buildings at fourteen stories, and the French-of-the-long panel of Vernon Boulevard. The bottom-left image shows some additional public open space at the northern corner of the site, leading into that commercial frontage. And the bottom-right is two views zoomed in of the commercial frontage along Vernon Boulevard, which would activate that street. The top view of this slide shows the Tenth Street frontage. Building C, the largest, the fourteen-story building, is shown at the right. And you can see that the site plan creates a transition from the higher scale at the north end of the site, along the three wide streets, to the lower scale and open space at the southern edge of the site. Building D, which is in the center with this sort of white facade, is limited in height to four stories along Tenth Street, in consideration of the adjacent New York Museum and its open-air garden, which is directly across the street. You can also see the approximately 16,000 square foot public open space at the corner there. Then the bottom view is a view from the eleventh Street frontage, again showing that the massing is concentrated at the northern edge of the site. In response to our initial pre-ULER meeting with Community Board One, the applicant adjusted the MIH income option to include option one, as well as option two. So buildings A and B will be developed with option one, that's the lower income of the MIH or mandatory inclusionary housing options. And the applicant also increased the number of large units, previous studios, and adding two or three other units. So you can see the total breakdown for the entire development is on the bottom chart. That's ninety-two mandatory inclusionary housing units at an income level of their MIH option one, which is an average of 60% AMI, for units at 40% AMI, and MIH option two, which is an average of 80% AMI. For a total of 330 units, twenty-two of which would be studios, forty-one one-bedrooms, thirty-two two-bedrooms, and five three-bedrooms. This slide just highlights the open space provided for the development on the site plan. The leftmost portion of the slide is the southern edge of the site, where the largest public open space is provided. At the center, there is an open space that's for building residents. And then the right-hand side of the slide is the northernmost portion of the site, where there's about a 1600-foot open space leading into the commercial frontage along Vernon Boulevard. Portions of the private open space at the center of the building would also be available to the commercial tenants, offer use in and having some offer space for the developer to operate.
All right, Frank, I think I have the general idea. And we also, the Community Board, can you just ask a few little questions?
Absolutely.
Number one, the open space that's in front, where there's that sort of a marketing door, is that the open space of the block?
So the, referring to the leftmost space and the rightmost space, or?
We had a photo before that had the buildings surrounding the open space.
It's either.
Between B and A.
Between B and A, that is not open. That's for the building residents.
So how do you, like, park it off?
It's, there's, there would be gates. So the access point for the building and for building residents, what would be, who would say you need a key farrer to be able to do that? The exterior along Tenth Street, Eleventh Street, would be landscaping, so that if there were a void in a blank street walk, it would be, give the appearance of, of open space and.
I'd be curious, and I'd be interested to know, like, in the exterior too, what that gate would look like. And you gave up a large portion of it.
Sure.
It looks like, at least from photos, it looks like a large portion from the front. So if you could just get that to us later, that'd be great.
Yeah, we have elevations up and down.
And the affordability is not senior, right? The affordability is not senior, right? Straight out of affordability?
Correct. At this point, it's just, it's not a senior program.
The application materials. The application materials show 351 total units, which we're presenting 330.
So in response to Community Board One's concerns about affordability and unit sizes, yeah, it reduced the total number of units to provide more units and more workloads. So basically, some of the smaller units were incorporated into more units, reducing the overall number of units.
Why did you people vote no in your work?
I'm afraid I don't know. It was a general roll call vote, and members of the Community Board had a difference about those issues.
Okay, any agreements with labor? Anything like that?
That discussion is ongoing. The applicant is not with 32BJ, and we'll continue the conversation.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, as a testifier, 32BJ, Richard Aiorio. Good morning, Mr. Er.
Good morning, President. My name is Richard Aiorio. I'm a member of 32BJ and been a resident service worker for over a decade. I'm representing over 4,000 residents that lived and worked in Community District One, and I'm here to share our views on the rezoning request recommend that Cipico Construction Inc. committed prevailing wage building service jobs at the recommendation of this project. At 32BJ, we know that responsible development includes good jobs. As a member of a majority market rate development across from the East River, we must come with community benefits, including jobs that pay a prevailing wage. Our neighborhood is becoming increasingly expensive, and New York's economy is already hard on working families. In order to create a fair New York, developers must make credible commitments to providing prevailing wage, jobs, and building service jobs. We estimate that this project will generate over seven new building service jobs, and these jobs should be good jobs that regard working families' dignity. My prevailing wage job is allow me security. Security to know that my family and myself are getting the best quality healthcare, and security to know that if I need to take a time off from work, that my job will be there the next step. Cipico Construction Inc. has yet to make any credible commitment to prevailing wage jobs at the front for service workers. We're respectfully requesting that the developer commit to prevailing wage building service jobs as part of your recommendation for this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your involvement today. Have any other witnesses? The side is closed. Thank you. And if my staff could deal with the microphone, that'd be helpful before the record's on portion of this, so we have everything on the record. Steven, Senator Corey, we have condolences, please, on loss of the other.
Thanks.
Very good.
Call your items number four and five are related. DFA number 1-8-0-0-3-6-DFQ, and 1-8-8-0-3-7-C-R-Q. Effective Community Board Number One, the applicant's area is mine.
Are you all 32BJ? Mr. Aiorio, you first, and then well. Thank you. Thank you. Sir.
Good morning. I'm Todd Dale here, Office of Mayor, Black Man, Detective Department. We are here for two related actions for this site, which is provided by 38, 37, 34, 38. First action would be a zoning match amendment, two parts, CP, which is over from M1 to R6A, the northern portion of the block. This area right here, this northern portion of the block. And then a related action to rezon again from M1-1 to R6A with a C13 commercial overlap overlaying the southern portion of the block. In addition, related to this, we're seeking to establish, the second action we establish, a mandatory inclusionary housing area to terminate the rezoning area. And with respect to that, just to clarify, option two, which we'll continue to later, is the current development. We have the zoning change map. This area right here is, this center right here, is the area that we've been zoning. To give a little background, even though this is a zone, like, actually both this M1-1 specific district and M1-5 to the west, the vast majority of the development is really west here, is actually already residential. And as a result of this rezoning, a number of buildings that are currently non-performing would become performing under the R66 zone. This very right here, you can see essentially this seems to extend residential use into this little black portion of this little two-bedroom block. The goal behind this particular action is seeking to facilitate the development area, which would be five blocks at the front of the Gate Street through the center portion of the block. Seeking to develop the proposed seven-story cellar, sub-seller, mixed-use development. Here are a few renderings to show what is proposed. It would be parking at the sub-seller, cellar, and first floor of the building, for the upper floors for residential use. Total floor area of the building would be 56,139 square feet, which would be 95,000 square feet gross. Of that, 53,493 would be commercial, and 2,645 would be commercial use for the first-floor construction, as shown down here on the render. It would be a 65,450-site building, as I said, seven stories. It would create 62 dwelling units, 15 studios, 25 one-bedrooms, 22 two-bedrooms, and 62 apartments. Pursuant to option two, we should say, the super development, and the result is, certainly we have a requirement of our local services to build. No particular, straight out, we all have stories to the Anas, 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 to We convened neighborhood advisory committees to understand, uh, what the best recommendations were from neighborhood consideration and neighborhood concerns. And we are committed to a continuing process of, uh, community engagement moving forward. The program itself, our plan is to close the, there are currently eleven active jails in New York City. There are eight detention facilities open on Rikers Island and three in the boroughs, Manhattan, Brooklyn, and of course, the barge in the Bronx. Our plan is to replace these eleven current active city jails with four new detention facilities. Obviously, today, we're talking about the proposed facility in Two Gardens. But the ultimate plan is to have, uh, total capacity of four thousand six hundred beds. Now, I, uh, again, when we began this new, uh, application, the state legislative reforms did not yet pass. And so, uh, the, uh, application is for, uh, total of five thousand seven hundred and fifty beds. We will be amending it to reflect the impact of these new legislative reforms. The program changes to date, uh, is, um, and this is what is reflected in the current U-LR application, is that, uh, we, in response to community feedback and response to the, uh, concerns and, uh, the issues that we have heard, both at the neighborhood level and also, um, from justice impacted individuals and community organizations, uh, we have, uh, adjusted our plan to reduce the inefficiency rate. We are proposing a centralized, uh, location for women within the Queens facility. That is as a direct response to the feedback that we got from many different organizations and that work with women who are incarcerated, and a number of focus groups that we did, uh, on Rikers Island and also at the community, both with women who were paying and facility staff. So, those are the changes that have happened to date. As a result of those changes, there has been, uh, reduction in the height of each of the proposed facilities. Uh, that reduction was about forty feet for the Queens site to the current U-LR application. It's for a maximum envelope of two hundred and seventy feet. The confirmed changes that will be, uh, that will be reflected in, uh, U-LR amendment is that in response to what we know is a key concern of the Queens community, we will be removing the centralized infirmary from the Queens facility. That is a commitment that was made by the mayor. We are also going to be updating, as I know, as I mentioned, the, uh, number of beds required citywide to a lower number as a result of those legislative reforms that passed. And of course, that updated number of what will be one thousand one hundred and fifty beds at each site will also have an impact on, uh, the maximum envelope. In terms of the Queens site specifically, the program summary overall, uh, is about one point two five eight million square feet. Um, and that is comprised of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, um, towards housing. The other is the support and community facility space. As I mentioned, the specialized medical annex is currently in the U-LR application, but we are working to identify an alternate location. There will be, uh, six hundred and five parking spaces provided below grade. So, that is accessory parking spaces for staff for the facility. And then, in addition, uh, six hundred and seventy-six parking spaces and a new public parking lot. Uh, just, again, this is really essentially what the breakdown is in terms of the square feet of the housing. That is, um, primarily, uh, individual, uh, housing units, programming space on the housing unit level, direct access to outdoor recreation space, staff support space, food services area, and a day room. In terms of the support space, and this is a question that we knew that your office had had, so we tried to provide this information, uh, staff support space in lockers, intake admissions, lobby, uh, the visiting area, food service, laundry, salad board, and the house. The U-LR actions themselves, so system-wide, we are, uh, proposing, uh, site selection for the borough-based jails and an tax amendment to create the borough-based jail system special permit specific to Queens. Our permit includes FAR, other, both accessory park- parking, accessory loading, the public parking, and the city maintenance. And where we are in the process is, of course, uh, all of this and the closure of Rikers Island, uh, is currently going through a public approval process. Uh, and of course, we are in, uh, the Borough President for New York State, as you well know. Uh, we are assuming that there is, uh, public approval of, uh, our proposed plan. What this will allow us to do is move ahead with the design, build, construction, I'm sorry, design, build procurement process. Uh, and that will allow us to do procurement, design, and construction for the four sites. Our commitment is to close all of the jails on Rikers Islands no later than 2026. Uh, that is an update, actually, from what we had previously announced at the 2027 schedule as a result of design build. We actually believe that we can do this even faster. And our commitment is to close not just the jails on Rikers Island, but also to close the barge. Uh, we don't believe that a vote, uh, is, uh, part of our reform vision for New York City justice as well. And I think that's it for the formal presentation, but again, we have a number of individuals here that can ask for any questions you might have.
Will you, uh, Ms. Cook speak more, or you just want to answer questions?
You can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was wondering whether, uh, Ms. Cook wanted to, uh, ask, you know, testify or whether you just want to answer questions.
I'm available to answer questions.
Right. So, Ms. Kaplan, thank you for coming here today, and I appreciate it. Um, so I just want to clarify a few things. So, we originally were supposed to have fifty-one hundred beds, and now it's four thousand. And do we know what the breakdown is of the jail population now? When you say the jail population, I assume you mean Rikers, the barge, and the other two facilities and all that come with it, right? You don't trust me with Rikers, you mean the whole neighborhood population.
The entire, exactly.
Um, so, what is the breakdown right now? Borough-wise.
So, uh, I can, so there's a number of different, uh, breakdowns. Um, I, or, you're asking this specifically in terms of the borough residents? Are you asking in terms of-
I'm asking where the residents are from. If the point of community jails is to put folks closer, which I agree with, to the infrastructure of their support, I'm wondering how many people right now are, are in jail, serving either misdemeanor or, I'm not trying yet, uh, in the vicarage.
Okay, so, uh, it is about, uh, eighty percent pre-trial, um, approximately. Uh, I should say that a significant population right now is in, on estate technical parole violation. That is over seven hundred individuals, I believe, but just over six hundred today. Um, thank you. Just over six hundred, uh, individuals who are in estate technical parole violation. That is of significant, uh, concern to the city. We believe that those are not individuals that it's appropriate to have in detention. Um, uh, the, I think, so in terms of the borough residents, it's about four percent from Staten Island. Uh, about twenty percent of the remainder are from Queens. Um, and, uh, I'm sorry, twenty percent of the whole are from Queens. And it is about equal distribution, Manhattan, um, Bronx, and Brooklyn. I will say, if you're looking at just borough residents, uh, there is a slightly number, a higher number of borough arraignment, um, cases from Manhattan, but that's kind of the, the difference.
So, what is the num- what is the percentage from Manhattan, from Brooklyn, and Bronx?
So, I don't, uh, you know, I'm not, but I said, I think, as I said-
You just think they're all-
Around, yeah.
One thirty each of the remainder? And the women, how many women are incarcerated right now in jail?
There's about four hundred and fifty women in detention.
And how many of those do you think are gonna be let out on the new cash bail law?
So, we are projecting that there will be no more than four hundred women. I'm sorry, two hundred women at the point at which we have to reduce population.
And you're putting them all in Queens jail?
Yes. So, as a result, initially, our proposal had had women in each of the four proposed facilities. Uh, it was a very small number of women at each location, obviously, given that we're assuming that it will be a small number overall. We got a lot of feedback from different women's service organizations, uh, and formerly detained women, uh, that the most appropriate way to provide the best level of gender responsive services and have staff that were well, uh, you know, suited and wanted to work with the female population was to have all of the women in one location. Uh, that also would allow dedicated space for female visitation, uh, for programming, um, all of those, uh, services. And so, in direct response to the feedback that we received, we are proposing that those, uh, two hundred women are in one site.
So, after we get, we have people add on the tab fail and nonviolent felonies, it's four thousand people. So, what number are you lowering all the other boroughs to also?
So, we are, uh, for, at the point of, it will be about one thousand one hundred and fifty beds in each of the four proposed sites.
Say that again, sorry.
So, we're planning to have no more than four thousand people in detention. Again, that is a result of that, uh, legislative reform that we are very supportive of. So, to house a population of a thousand individuals, the proposal will be adjusted to reflect one thousand one hundred and fifty beds at each site.
So, it's already lowered to one thousand one hundred and fifty?
The U-LR will be updated. The U-LR application itself right now is, uh, what, we filed the U-LR before the legislation passed. So, we will be updating the proposal to reflect one thousand one hundred and fifty beds. There's currently fourteen thirty beds in the application.
And before it goes to the council?
Yes. Yes.
And the six hundred and ninety-six parking spots? Is that municipal spots? Is that people that only go to Rikers, uh, go to the community-based jail?
So, there's about six hundred parking spots that will be below grade underneath the facility for facility staff. Then there will be, uh, over six hundred spots that are public parking for the public.
Yeah, and your slide presentation said, uh, centralized infirmaries would be moved. I'm not clear.
Everybody just smile up to the right. Smile up to the right a little.
I can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Just to repeat my question, earlier in your presentation, you said-
Who's standing on my side of the camera?
There was in the initial proposal, uh, centralized infirmary that would have provided, uh, a level of medical care, um, that was more elevated, that would be centralized to the system, not specific to the female population. We have heard that that is, uh, area of concern, uh, for the community and neighborhood. And so, in response to knowing that there is a concern about having that centralized medical, uh, services site located in one location, we will be removing that from the Queens facility. That will be, that is currently about one hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. And so, again, in response to hearing that that was a concern for the, the neighborhood and community, we are, uh, identifying an alternate, uh, way to provide those medical services.
So, in the earlier iterations, you've also told that Queens, the women's hospital services would be centralized.
Yes.
That remains that-
The maternity and the nursery would still be in the Queens facility. Yes.
But would you want it to return the, and the general health machine?
There will be, uh, healthcare services and clinics in all of the four sites. So, that will be provided, and, and those, uh, healthcare services and clinics will be at each of the four facilities. And so, there will be healthcare clinics specific for the female population.
In relation to the building height, I know you said it's been reduced to two hundred and seventy-three after one hundred and thirty-four feet. So, the question is, why do you need to place that story? Are there any increase in double four heights? What kind of things program that would require a new set of?
So, uh, what we are seeking to do as we close the jails on Rikers Island is not just, uh, relocate individuals, but also provide a level of care and services, uh, and programming that is far better than what is in our current justice system. So, there are, uh, the square footage that is required to provide this program. And I should say that this is something that was developed out of, uh, pretty significant amount of engagement and focus groups with formerly incarcerated individuals, with, uh, service providers who currently work in the city's jail system, uh, with family members who visit their loved ones, with public defenders, to really understand what are the things that were important to provide within our detention facilities. And so, a number of the components that are causing the size of the program are things like, one, smaller housing units. Uh, two, programming and outdoor recreation at the housing unit level, so that there's far, uh, better area and space available to provide programming and for outdoor recreation for people to access easier than they currently can. We have room in the lobbies for visiting, uh, child play areas, um, a number of different things like that, as well as areas, um, for staff support. So, all of that is a factor in the square footage of the program. Now, that being said, we also certainly have heard from neighborhoods and communities that height is of, and the size of these buildings is of a key concern. And so, one of the things that we have been working to do is figure out ways that we can reduce the size of the buildings themselves without fundamentally compromising the whole pur- purpose of this, which is to provide, uh, facilities that are safer, um, more humane, have better programming and services available. So, again, that is part of the reason we were able to identify, uh, a way to do that by, um, centralizing the women and reducing the inefficiency rate. That brought down the height of the Queens facility by about forty feet. We are now working to understand what the impact is of this bail reform and the legislation that is changing the projected numbers by, uh, a thousand individuals system-wide. We are working to translate what that will do to the size of the facilities. And we're also, uh, working on identifying what are the other, you know, possible ways that we can potentially reduce the scale of the building without compromising the purpose of having better programming and recreation space. All of those things that we have heard are really important and central to the whole mission of reforming our justice system.
Do you have any data regarding, uh, script that is occupied by those type of services currently existing? And you have a systematic, very, uh, ideas about how the screening might-
So, the square footage that's currently existing hasn't existed in the city's jail systems in micro-lan today?
Look at the script system to-
I don't have that. I've had that information, uh, her with me. If you can look into it. Can you get back to my line?
Yeah, I can. So, the focus of the question is, how can I, uh, you know, this, uh, how do you find that? And so, I'd ask the, uh, the, uh, the-
Yes, we will, um, we'll get back to you on the, the space available presently for the support services.
How many, well, how, how many square, let's put it another way. How much of the twenty-seven story of one hundred and seventy feet building is going to these support services?
I mean, yeah.
One of the slides.
So, we have, uh, I think, for instance, laundry, laundry is, well, let me go back to this slide overall. So, that's, the housing is eight hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet, and that is what encompasses that. Um, the support space is two hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet. Um, a couple of examples, uh, kitchen is sixteen thousand square feet of that. Um, laundry is about five thousand square feet of that. So, that's kind of, that's the breakdown overall.
So, where is the part of the support space that says, "Burgary rotation, mental health illness, workforce development, uh, educational credits, G, G, D, youth?"
Right, so that is all the, the programming space.
So, how much is that?
I can get back to you in terms of the programming space within the housing.
Okay, but I, I just think that before we start saying we need that size, because of the programming space, we should really know what they are, what the square footage is.
Yeah, and how we can provide that to them. Yeah, I don't know the number of square feet of them, but how we can provide that.
So, again, if we lower, if we lower the population from, that we expected from over five thousand to four thousand? And we're twenty percent of the population that's right down there. Do we have any idea what percentage we will be after for the four thousand? Because it seems like it should be a smaller facility, should, uh, the numbers that I, if you have it right.
Uh, so, uh, you know, I think we would assume that there would still be kind of a equal distribution.
So, twenty percent of four thousand, if I'm not mistaken, according to my tips, that is about these. So, we still have eleven hundred and fifty beds accounted for here. So, why is that?
Yeah, so, we're also considering about two hundred, uh, of the female population.
So, when you say four thousand, you don't mean full population, you just mean women?
Four thousand is the entire population. So, there will be women, so as we have centralized the, uh, women within the Queens facility, there will be women that are not from Queens that are part of that. Again, initially-
Right, so two hundred women in all will be left. So, what percentage of those are from Queens? I mean, even if it's a twenty-five percent, let's just say. You're still talking a smaller facility.
Okay.
Needed, I'm asking. I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not arguing, I'm just trying to find out why we still have so many beds here, considering the percentage of the population that, that I think that you think we're gonna have.
Sure, I think if, um, we could do some of the math, just in general, in, in the rounding of it, because that's more for me. So, as a twenty percent number, we can calculate it all eight hundred of four thousand of, uh, Queens residents plus what you project to be a total population of approximately two hundred women. So, assuming there's twenty-five percent each, but, so there'll be an additional hundred and seventy-five, oh, I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty women that would be added to your, um, eight hundred. So, now we're at nine hundred and fifty. We have one thousand one hundred and fifty beds that, uh, provide-
We have one thousand, one hundred and fifty beds that provides for swing space, um, a thousand people in detention in Queens, but one thousand, one hundred and fifty beds, because there may be beds, cells that are down for repair, the doors broken, um, the population, um, you know, may, uh, need to be, uh, separated, uh, due to, uh, classification, misclassification, and other separation orders. And so that flexibility provides us, uh, the department, um, the operational separation elements.
So again, I'm, I'm still on the side, so originally it was what, three hundred and ten feet, is that the end fix? You said it went down forty?
Yes.
So is that before or after we calculated all those getting out of jail because of the re-lo?
We, before. We haven't yet.
Haven't yet done the calculations of the re-lo?
We're working right now.
Right.
So that, that initial three hundred and ten was at a population of five thousand. Our current two-settling is also at a population of five thousand.
So what do you think it's gonna look like after the?
That is something that we're, I, I.
We don't know.
I'd be premature to say, but we are working right now to figure out what the impact is of that smaller population.
So when will you know?
We're working on it now.
Before the council?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right. And what does outside space look like in a vertical building like this? Like recreational space, exercise, fresh air?
Um, do you want to talk about that? So we haven't designed, uh, the buildings yet, but the proposed, um, scope, um, of the dead height density includes, um, adjacent outdoor recreation space to each housing unit, um, which would mean that it would have fresh air and, um, daylight, and it would be available to those in the housing unit, um, throughout the duration of their, uh, of the day, which is different than how we operate outdoor recreation, department operation facilities now, where we have generally one main, um, outdoor yard, and we rotate, um, one hour recreation opportunities, um, per person a day. The, uh, there's also the possibility, um, because this building's haven't been designed yet, for, um, utilization, um, of maybe a court control or other outdoor roof space, um, you know, that we do, um, some of our, uh, programming that we do now in our, uh, Rikers Island facilities, um, adjacent out at a ground level. Um, but that's, that's the anticipated outdoor recreation, um, space.
Explain to me a little bit about the first one you said, the first option.
The adjac- the adjacent, um, recreation, yeah. So, uh, directly off of the, uh, common area of the housing unit would be doors that would, uh, lead, uh, people to the outdoor space. The outdoor space would be in, enclosed with, um, uh, some, some type of security, um, you know, designed materials to be determined, because the building materials haven't been selected, but it would provide for both fresh air and, uh, direct light into those, um, adjacent spaces.
Do you have a, a rendering of it, anything like that?
He can share one with you, so, I don't know.
But does that after space come within the square footage that you're saying the building is going to be, it comes within it?
Yes.
It's not extra?
Yes.
So if you have a rendering of that, that'd be great, just to see it. Um, the power grid on Rikers is its own electric, uh, generator, everything like that, if I'm not mistaken. How does that work?
This is senior deputy prosecutor, Amy Carroll, is in.
Hi, I'm Lauren.
Hi, how are you? Uh, currently, right now, Rikers Island has its own, um, energy business plan, we produce our electricity. We would be, with these four new facilities, we would be drawing off of the grids that serve the main, uh, surrounding buildings. We would not be providing electricity from neighbors like them.
So how about the, so we have the same thing, the individuals inside the, uh, this block?
We will be designing and building these in accordance with all the local laws, obviously, and in consultation with F E N law, and the state regulatory's on commission of corrections to ensure that we have the appropriate, uh, safety measures, auxiliary lighting, and evacuation routes to, uh, ensure the safest environment possible for all staff.
And I assume that, uh, there are any?
Yes, there will, yes, there will, we will definitely have generators that will facilitate the ability of providing all the resources.
Since we're building this structure from scratch, um, and seasonally A C, heating, does that provide throughout? Or, you know, on Rikers right now, uh, the temperature can be pretty, uh, inhumane, um, except in the staffing area, right, the areas.
Not necessarily our staff. Work in the same environment as the population.
Sure, so is, is that acoustical in the structure?
Yeah, these buildings will be fully climate-controlled sealed, uh, buildings, so there will be H V A C that will provide, uh, temperatures, you know, within the range of sixty-eight, so we, it's whatever the established range is.
And is, is it the lack of that that's, that's causing the, um, the regular temperatures on Rikers? And the facilities on Rikers?
Wouldn't, yes, it's the lack of having any air conditioning, because the buildings were built and designed at the time, and air conditioning was not included in those designs.
Make a suggestion with you, window with air conditioning or something like that, might be helpful. We're just out there, it's hot out here. Um, all right, well, you're gonna stay here to answer questions at the end? But thank you very much. So we will go to speakers, if we can, Lisa. So I'm gonna start and repeat the rules, uh, as Lisa Atkins had mentioned before. This is gonna be a very manageable hearing. Um, we understand the passion on, on sides of the issue, on both sides of this issue. We respect that, by the way. Um, and we wanna make sure that everyone has a chance to be heard on both sides of the issue. Um, we're gonna try to go back and forth between people that are for it, against it, for it, against it. And I would like to clarify one thing. I know that it seems like it, but this is really not an initiative about closing Rikers. This is really about the community-based jails and the application that's in front of us. So we don't begrudge anybody for giving opinions on it, but, uh, it really is about the application of this jail, the size, all that that comes with it. Uh, and we appreciate everyone's, uh, cooperation today. And we are going to start with, um, Akila Tomlinson from Woodside here.
How many minutes are there? Three. Hundred and three minutes, okay. Thank you. Yeah, there's a lot of people trust this to speak today. You can take the microphone off, it's uncomfortable for you.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Akila Tomlinson, and I'm meeting president, and I'm one of many advocates and part of just leadership USA's closing Rikers. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Speaking, you can.
Thank you.
Speaking on behalf of those currently and formerly incarcerated on Rikers Island and family members that have been impacted, our campaign supports closing Rikers and building rural-based facilities that will not be designed differently or operate differently as well. I want to use this opportunity to talk about my eldest brother. He has been sitting on Rikers Island for over six hundred days, waiting for his case to go to trial. My experience as a visitor, there is almost as tragic as a person being detained there. I reserve an entire day to visit my brother, as the triple known as both mentally and physically exhausting. Once I arrive at the island, I must strip myself of anything that is considered a threat, whether it be my jewelry or something, as the puzzle of hand. Afterwards, I have to go through security. The first time I visited my brother, the metal detector, the metal in my bra strap set the metal detector off. I was led into a private room to be thoroughly searched afterwards. I was patted down by a female correctional officer six times. I felt violated and humiliated. I made it known that I had nothing on me, that my bra strap was likely the reason for the metal detector going off. This didn't seem to matter. She certainly said it's procedure. I stood there and cooperated. I wanted to be overestimized possible. Afterwards, I took the bus to the facility where my brother was being housed, and that day I waited in an out seat because he was expecting, because he was waiting for an escort. The city can change this, and our, in our campaign recognizes that it will take all of the workers together to accomplish this goal. We encourage the city's immediate support to build rural-based facilities to ensure Rikers is closed as fast as possible. The city can plan to reduce the average daily jail population to less than three thousand individuals by committing to investing in effective alternatives to incarceration, decriminalizing the most common local offenses, and moving all people with serious mental illness to treatment settings not managed by the Department of Crime and Public Security. Not only could new facilities need to be built, the city must commit that those facilities operate differently. We have the potential to close Rikers by twenty twenty-four. To make this possibility reality will require continued commitment from all of us. I urge you to vote yes on this proposal, to move disclosure process quickly forward, but also to include recommendations that are important in ways that the city must improve this proposal. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, it's my, uh, I would say I'm sorry for the experience that you had.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sylvia from, uh, Community Board.
Thank you all for being here. Um, I'd like to provide some answers that Dana Kaplan didn't provide. As of last August, there were nine hundred and eighty-seven residents from Queens who were incarcerated. That makes twelve percent and not twenty percent. As for recreational space, which does concern us in any place, the recreational space came out in our meetings, and I have to talk about that also before I get to these other issues, uh, seven hundred and fifty square feet is supposedly the recreational space outside. When we asked how many people would be using that seven hundred and fifty square feet, the answer was thirty. It's like a two-bedroom apartment. It's not exactly humane or safe or fair. And speaking of humane, safe, and fair, you know, there are four boroughs that are opposed, and we're opposed because it's not safe or fair or humane what is being proposed. Now Dana Kaplan stood here and said it had been meetings, all of these meetings. On September twenty-four, Dana Kaplan testified at the city planning position. I was there, and she made the statement, and it's in writing, and you can see it in video, that there had been a significant amount of meetings with the communities and the neighborhoods. Well, I don't know who she was talking about, maybe Brooklyn, New Bronx, and Manhattan, but there had been zero in terms of Queens. So here we are today. And what has been certified, I know that what she says is that two hundred and seventy feet in height is in the application, but that sentence is followed by a sentence that says, for flexibility purposes, we may go to three hundred and thirty-two point ninety-two feet, that's three hundred and thirty-three feet, and just by any ordinary Kenwood ceiling, that's thirty-three stories. The building is humongous and the tower over the area. Now, interestingly enough, just last night, we came across some interesting statistics that were put out by the Lippman Commission, and they really show that we can do a lot better in terms of the size of these jails. Lippman is showing that, and this was a meeting in April held at Trinity Church with the faith community and with the Lippman Commission, and I'll copy this for you. So eight hundred, eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one people were incarcerated in York City jails, all news to email. And then Lippman said, how do we close Rikers? And all of these numbers were then put forward. And I have to say, I meant to preface it, that, you know, yes, criminal justice reform, and we had said months ago, if you're going to do criminal justice reform, why don't you wait until you know what you actually need in terms of these facilities? I mean, we started all kinds of laughing about the people who said, if you build them, they will build them. Well, you know what? That's where we are today. If you, if we build them, they will build them. I don't know whether I have any more time.
You don't, but you can leave your testimony here, I really appreciate you. And, uh, no, 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 not here. Thank you though. Um, and just so corrections knows, or the mayor's office knows, I wanna know about the nine hundred, that's right, about the square footage of recreational space at the end, so. Uh, next we have, uh, Marco, uh, Marco from Woodside.
My name is Mark Ravi, resident of Queens, in the member and leader of just leadership USA, both Rikers and that table. I'm understanding it, for during my twenty-four years in six months of incarceration. With the help of God, I willingly prepared myself to make a difference in this life by obtaining a bachelor's degree in behavioral science in the process, dedicating my life to criminal justice reform, building communities, and making our Queens stronger, significantly. I totally agree with building a community-based city, but with conditions. In the course of incarceration, on two occasions, I was sent to Rikers Island to protect my rights to do my work. On both occasions, the conditions of Rikers Island were so horrific compared to the upstate prison that I wanted to go back to as soon as possible, to sixteen, correct in prison, which is a maximum prison. Such conditions and rights were so dreadful that I cannot believe the treatment of a young being by a criminal justice, by federal New Yorkers. It is imperative that we move forward through closing Rikers Island as soon as possible, and it's also imperative that we see an implementation of a comprehensive and effectively rehabilitated model for the new community-based city. This model will require transparency and accountability to see this approach is correctly and effectively implemented. If so, it can support the people who are still detained, but as well as our communities. When I say the people who are still detained, I say that because our focus is decarceration and criminal justice. On account of the reforms we already achieved and the further changes we know are possible through our advocacy in the next few years, the city can be planning for the even smaller jail population, along with the three thousand people. That will make all of the facilities in the one in this neighborhood last fall. That's not the, in the process of closing Rikers Island, in the building, in the building of the new community-based facility, the city must make equal investment in the kinds of community resources online and building the, et cetera. I just wanna ask a little thing. My life is experienced in Rikers Island and other cities. If we don't do this right, we're just gonna be housing, we'll be, we have to have, you know, the right structure and the right programs. If not, you know, it's gonna, you know, return back to the same old.
So, Mr. Barrios, first of all, I wanna thank you for being an advocate, after coming out of the system. I think that is amazing. You are, you are the type of person we wanna send back into the community, to speak to our young people, to make sure they get on good paths, uh, and, and be an example of what we can do, uh, to make our system better. So I wanna thank you for that. Um, so, just out of curiosity, you know, I've been very vocal about closing Rikers, and I've been very concerned about what's going on here anywhere in borough. Wouldn't it be, don't you think it'd be better if we actually knew what the programs were? Drug rehabilitation, how we're gonna do visitation, how we're gonna make sure that we have, um, all of that in place, um, while at the same time making strong affirmative steps to close Rikers? I just, I'm just wondering if you have any ideas on that?
Well, I was invited to be part of, uh, Ma'Jai's, uh, Justice and Meditation, which is a working group to, uh, recommend programs to individuals who are currently incarcerated for the new rural-based city. Uh, I did some suggestions about the invitation, because I don't think the punitive model right now, we all know it, it doesn't work. So dealing and re-meditative for model works, I believe it will work. Um, there needs to be programs for people with dementia conditions, uh, the aviation might just, you know, individuals who have. Um, and we, we hate the programs. Uh, there's a lot of grassroots organizations who, who's act, actually have done a great job in prevention, um, diversion programs, A T Is, those are important.
Thank you very much for participating.
Thank you, my folks, right.
We next stand up, going back in court.
Standing gentleman up there.
Standing gentleman up there.
Maureen, Community Board Nine. Thank you. And again, let's, I know everyone has many things they're excited about today, but we want to keep our focus down.
Good morning, and thank you all for being here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Maureen Fleck, from Community Board Nine, and I'm also a professor of American and a college student at Northwestern University. And I see we have some moving parties in terms of numbers, and for the general, I've kind of general, I've already spoken to this, but of course, I'm in favor of criminal justice reform. Justice must be restorative, not punitive, and small-scale, safer, more committed jails and objective, along with all the additional reforms that are probably coming, cash bail, no solitary confinement, open file discovery. However, I have to say that from the inception, this process has been to build these, oh, these jails, I would say, if not illegal reckless, and I would venture to say immoral in the sense that the community was really not taken into consideration from early on. And I do suggest that the narrative, the term moral imperative is used as a smokescreen to deflect any and all, I think, legitimate criticism. I would quite stress also the unprecedented nature of many, if not most, of the aspects of this process to structure these jails. From the coupling of all of those four year-long applications into one, I believe is unprecedented. Second, I would say again, it's a lack of real community engagement, and what Dana Kaplan says, we've had these committees from the beginning, and that in its last minute attempt, I think, to address the demands of the Littman Commission to have early on and robust community engagement through the course, the real community leaders and spokespeople were included at the last minute to afford a modicum of truth there, claim of community engagement. Only when the plans were presented truly as a fake act of impurity, our input was almost window dressing and at best. I think also what has not been spoken about really, I think, is recklessness with the taxpayers' money. This true cost is never really addressed, not only, because people say, "Oh, it's thirty billion, one debt service is included." And substantial amounts have already been spent on these projects. At the same time, there are projected substantial budget cuts for the city's budget, many will affect many aspects of the city, like education, affordable housing, transportation, to name a few. The mandate to build smaller, safer jails and to function these places as justice hubs in communities which would benefit from these new economic opportunities to be afforded by these jails. This is not Cubards, we do not mean these economic opportunities. It also suggests, and we've talked about this, that the family members and friends would be closer to this, it would be easier, but we could literally stop at Rikers Island, all kinds of more accessible means of transportation. I just want to say quickly that physical outdoor space is very important. I can ask those suggestions. The sketch does not really show you. I don't know how the lights will interact, so I don't know. Where are you going to have opportunities for space?
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. I'm sorry to cut people off early. Just a question, you call these elected officials here at all? Do you like this? Okay. Fine, thank you. I asked that just in order to get the question. Edwin Ford, would you make a point?
Hi, I'm reading testimony on behalf of Edwin, because he can't be here. Thank you. My name is Edwin Santana. I was born and raised in Queens. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to express my distaste for Rikers Island, an environment that embodies negativity in its rawest form. If Rikers Island was a human being, they would be the embodiment of every evil soul ever to have walked this earth. I know this because I was detained there. I know firsthand how it is to walk in fear through those murky hallways every day. People who have never been on Rikers, people like me who have been on Rikers know we must close it. Many New Yorkers have come to realize that as well. After much organizing, the mayor has agreed with us that Rikers must close, and the questions now are when and how. Rikers must be closed on the fastest possible timeline. Why? Because it's a human rights crisis. As the leader of the Close Rikers and Free New York Campaign, I've done the work to get state reforms passed that will reduce the numbers of people in NYC jails, as well as all over the state. And we are still fighting for more reforms. Within the next five years, we believe the city can reduce the jail population even further to less than three thousand people. For us, that means more people will be free. For others, that means the building will be smaller. I urge you to support the proposal for borough-based facilities, but with conditions. Number one, the facilities to be smaller because of a smaller jail population of about seven hundred and fifty per facility. And number two, for the facilities to run truly differently. You may not have ever been to Rikers Island, but you cannot honestly say that you do not know how bad it is, because we took time to tell you our experience. Please do not ignore us. To vote no on this proposal is to place yourself on the wrong side of history. To vote no on this proposal is to turn a blind eye to the suffering of other human beings. And please understand that to say no to this proposal is to put your own fears ahead of other people's lives. And I just want to note on the comment about the moral imperative and waiting, people who recognize the moral imperative of closing Rikers, as Close Rikers leaders have named them, and as Edwin wrote in his statement, are working on improving this plan and moving it forward, so that there is a possibility to criticize, to make it better, but not to try to stop it.
So, everybody, I appreciate that. So, just so everybody understands, there's only about sixty-eight? So, I understand, like, I am, I hear everybody on Rikers, and I actually think that the history of people that have been there, it's important to hear, but I would also like to just try and focus votes on this application, understanding that this application is final in ninety days. I mean, it's final. So whether or not we think that the city will amend it after, that's one thing, you may believe that. Whether we think they'll make it smaller after, so they don't fill fifteen hundred beds or twelve hundred beds, that's okay too, if you say that. But I think we need to focus on the next ninety days, this is going to be final. And that's important to understand. So I next call Aida, Queens resident, against. I'm trying to just say the first names without identifying, so I'll say the name of it.
Thank you for President Katz for this opportunity to speak on the proposal. I'm against. Hold the mic. Hello? Okay. So I am a resident of Briarwood, Queens, which is the neighborhood my name is called Cubards. It's a very diverse, multiracial, middle-class and working-class neighborhood, and everyone I know is in favor of criminal justice reform and treating people who may be indecent, regardless of what walk in life they come from, if they have encountered with criminal justice system. What I am very much against, and when people talk about closing Rikers, I generally favor it, but a lot of you don't even think about the other side, the close Rikers, some saying no new jails at all, some have spoken out in favor of borough-based jails, but you're not focusing on the community where the jails are going to be focused. Now, the Littman Commission said that with borough-based jails, upon the closing of Rikers, should be small, not residential neighborhoods, and that the city should work very closely with the surrounding communities. Well, thirty or thirty-three stories, two million square feet, two towers, they don't give you all these specifics, is not small in a neighborhood, Cubards, Briarwood, Forest Hills, and most of the buildings are five, six stories. I take great issue, I mean, I think it's shameful and immoral that we want to spend billions of dollars, and in all these presentations by Ms. Kaplan and other representatives of the mayor, they don't talk about the cost. I was at a meeting with other community advocates, as well as Close Rikers advocates in March with the mayor, and I believe the figure that's quoted without really support is about ten point six billion dollars. That's ten point six billion dollars that will not be available for improvement of our schools, libraries, additional access to treatment for the mentally ill and the drug addicted, which is what gets people often in trouble and in jail in the first place, after-school activities, and job opportunities. So I think that this focus on building new jails, and I agree with someone who said if they build them, they will fill them. I would think that it is probably right to close Rikers, and I don't believe it's tractable thinking it can be closed immediately. There are many criminal justice reform initiatives that are underway, and this whole process has been arrogant and undemocratic. The Littman Commission had no one from the neighborhoods. I don't know what outreach they did. They had well-connected, well-organized, well-funded organizations that paid for this power, but nobody from the neighborhoods. I was actually on a program called Metro Focus. It was televised on Monday, public television program, with an activist from the South Bronx, and we agreed, and that is a majority, minority neighborhood people of color who they're elected official, basically betrayed them, as I feel that our council members. So I think that we need to, what we also don't hear, I'll finish up, is exactly what they're going to do to improve Rikers and address the problematic and inhumane practices, because even if this got approved tomorrow, it's going to take years to build a jail. So I don't hear any focus on that, and I just think that this is very ill-conceived, and it shouldn't be passed in its current form.
Thank you. Avram from Jackson Heights.
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Aviron Cohen, and I'm a resident of Jackson Heights. I live within walking distance to the Rikers Bridge. And I'm here to share my own story of having an incarcerated relative. My younger brother was locked up for about a year and a half out of New Jersey. It would take me about two to three hours to go out there on Sunday to visit him, and it means the world to people on the inside to know that they are not forgotten, or they have support on the outside. The location of Rikers is incredibly isolated. I have observed people going to visit their relatives or friends, traveling within the same city, spend the same amount of time that I did going out to New Jersey from Queens. We have got to end this by closing Rikers, making families accessible to each other, so that people maintain access to their support system. Now, I'd like to add to the previous point that we have disinvested in parts of the city that have been disinvested in over long periods of time. Now that real estate interests want to take hold of them, you can look on the west side of Manhattan, there is a women's prison, and it's existed there for a long time, and it's surrounded now by some of the highest dollar real estate in the entire state. And so it doesn't just mean, it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, they coexist, and seemingly no one would even know. So it's wrong to think that just because a facility opens, that it would lead to detain in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve from Green Hill.
My name's Steve Sobleson, and I've been a resident of Cubards for seven years. I urge the borough president to disapprove of the application by the Department of Corrections involving the borough-based jail system. I have numerous concerns about an unlarge building in Cubards, and the fact that the Department of Corrections has had many changes in their proposals worries me. It worries me that these proposals will be changed according to the Department of Corrections will, and that the size of this building can change from day to day. This is already a congested area of Queens, Queens Boulevard, Union Turnpike, Close Bay, as well as Grand Central and the Harbor. What is to stop this proposed facility from having the same problems as Rikers Island? Rikers Island population has declined, as you've heard, but the problems haven't? I don't buy it. I want to remind the borough president that this building is right next to the proposed tower, and that the construction of it will make this area a mess for years to come. I don't envy the people of this building if this tower was built. I'd also like to remind everyone how long it took the current parking facility to be done, and what the construction of a tower this size would do to the heavily trafficked Queens Boulevard. Can Union Turnpike? I don't believe this is the best place for this facility. There was a jail facility here before, but nowhere near the scope that this one will be. Let's think of this community and all the other communities around it. I ask the borough president to say no to the applications presented concerning the borough-based jail system special plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's, ready? Yes. One more.
My name is Pahira. I'm a Queens resident and a mother, not only to my own, but to the many young people I work with. They're young men with lots of potential, but also with lots of trauma and pain that gets overlooked because of their behaviors. I lost my husband to cancer, and my children were greatly impacted by his loss. My youngest especially was traumatized because he died in my bed. That little boy is twenty years old today. He took a turn and ended up in the criminal justice system. He was on probation when he was pulled over for a backlight, then arrested for a knife, which he ended up getting violated and remanded. I didn't hear from him for three days. When I finally found out where he was at, I made my way to Rikers Island bar to the Bronx. He told me he was in the Volplains for three nights on the floor with roaches climbing on him, and he still didn't bathe. No phone call, no bed, no bath. The jail population in New York City is the lowest it's been in forty years, so there are no shortages of beds or staff in those facilities to explain such inhumane treatment. We must do better. The fact that Rikers is so isolated makes it easier for this abuse to happen with little oversight. Closing Rikers is urgent. It must be shut down due to the conditions. It is built on trash that releases poisonous gas as the trash decays. The city can reduce the capacity of the facilities it is planning, including the one here in Queens, by removing all people with serious mental illness from the correction system entirely, and instead into therapeutic settings, by decriminalizing the most common low-level offenses, the type of things that my son is asked for as a young man of color, but others are not. The city can plan for at least one hundred less people in the jail system by investing more alternatives, too. The type of programs focused on a therapeutic approach that will really benefit my son, rather than exposing him to the trauma of Rikers. The city can reduce the jail population even further. The facilities must also be operated differently. The people managing the facilities will have to be capable of and willing to end the culture of violence that consumes Rikers Island. The DOC is not. I support the plan to build four smaller borough-based facilities, including this one here in Queens, but with the conditions I just stated. The city must be planning for a jail population of less than three thousand people in the next few years, and must detail plans to limit the role and power of the Department of Corrections, so these facilities can actually support rehabilitation. As a mother and as an advocate, my son was able to get a program. Just finished high school, he can't get that in Rikers Island. No one can get that in Rikers Island with all the trauma. And investing in human beings is never a waste, because when people are better, communities are better.
That's right.
So, first of all, your son should be honored to have such an advocate.
That's right.
That's first of all. Just so everybody knows, again, this is an application for the actual jails that they want to put in, but I do think it's important, I know the Department of Corrections is here, and they have a high-level representative, and so that's a good thing, too, because quite honestly, we don't need to wait for any of the borough jails in order to make improvements of Rikers Island.
That's right.
And so I think it's important that they hear some of the stories as well. So, thank you. Vivian from, against?
She, I think, I see.
Huh?
She feels, to someone else who's in here.
Sure?
She says she is.
Okay. Yeah, oh, by the way, feel, feel more than welcome to say, you know, I'm for it, and I don't need to speak, I'm against it, and I don't need to speak. If you're so moved to do that. If you're so moved to do that, we'll keep the record of your opinion on record. Ben, for Barstool.
Excuse me. She stood, she said, "Thanks, you will speak."
Oh, okay. Somebody, okay, Vivian?
I don't have a lot of the compare and compare.
That's all right.
I think very much, I think very much, yes, the justice system, and I don't feel that the mayor's proposal is going to address this at all. We need change in the criminal justice system. We cannot wait 10 years with 700 people being tortured in Rikers. So let's concentrate that money on rethinking the criminal justice system and working on a solution. We just don't want to build four tiny Rikers. First, you have to change the structure and then figure out what to do. The mayor has proved over and over again to these people that this is not a well-thought-out plan. They cannot answer any questions about programs, recreation facilities, I mean, none of it has been thought out. The real estate developers will get the money, and our prisoners are on our benefit. Thank you.
So I'm going to take priority to thank you now. I'm going to take priority to just ask whoever can answer some of the questions from the city that have come up, not just sort of get something straight as we move forward. Can I do that? Who, do you want to do that? Monica, no?
Yeah.
Or the Department of Corrections. Just very quickly, I don't mean to belabor this, but before everybody else speaks, just so we can get some things clear. The amount of recreational space is really, what's the number of the amount of recreational space?
So the recreational space that folks are talking about, that's somewhere between square feet is a sort of a passive recreational space? More like a...
Yeah, just in here. Yeah, pull it out.
It's more like a closed-in sun porch that folks will be able to go in and out of all day as opposed to what you think of like you're going to have an hour of active recreational time. There's also big gyms on each floor for active recreation and active recreation on the couch. So that rec space attached to each housing unit is more like a closed-in sun porch you might have, so it would be the sun porch, the size of the two beds in the room.
All right. And there is a good point that people bring up, that there's so many iterations of this, right? You hear a lot of testimony about closing Rikers is absolutely the right thing to do. And I think that there's a lot of agreement on that, not by everybody, but by most of us. But I guess the question, if there's so many iterations are coming through, so many different numbers, so many different, it should be 3,000, it should be 4,000. But I have grave concerns that in 90 days, the power and the control of how this happens is with the mayor's office, just period. And so I guess my question is, are you going to have final numbers before the city council votes? I mean, final.
Yes, and just in terms of what the evolution of the numbers in the plan has been to date, I, you know, I want to be very clear that what we have been trying to do in the plan overall is listen and respond to the feedback. And so, yes, we have made changes to the plan. Before, we changed the number to 5,000. We adjusted the numbers of beds overall because we were listening to the feedback that we received. We proposed centralized aluminum because we were listening to the feedback that we received. Obviously, certainly, the legislative reform that we supported but did not know if it was going to pass changed the numbers. And so that is the source of the number change from 5,000 to 4,000. We will be updating that number in terms of the total projections, or the total population before the council votes. And so I certainly appreciate the, you know, concern about, is this a plan that will be reflected in the final ULEF? And our commitment is that, yes, we will update it before the council votes. The other, there are a few other things that we are doing also in response to community feedback and the feedback that we've gotten through the neighborhood advisory councils, the feedback that we have continued to get from justice-impacted individuals and the organizations that we consulted with. One of them is that we are currently conducting a feasibility study to look at whether there is a subpopulation of people with acute complex medical, mental health, and behavioral health and substance abuse issues that could be better served outside of borough detention facilities and in a more hostile environment. This is a feasibility study that we are conducting because it was feedback that we received, and that also is something that will be completed before the end of ULEF. And so that is an example of another thing that we are looking at to make sure that we can improve this plan as much as possible. So certainly, we have made changes to this plan. The changes that we have been making is because we want to ensure that as we move through this ULEF process and before we began it, that we were actually hearing what we are, the concerns, the feedback, the input that we are getting, both that got us to this process and also as we sit in these rooms and meet with all these individuals and beyond outside of them, we want to have a plan that by the end of this ULEF process is the best plan possible. We also want to acknowledge that culture change does not begin in the new facilities, and the Department of Corrections can definitely speak on the work that is underway. So absolutely, this is a fundamental moment. We, however, do believe that we can continue to make changes to this plan that are responsive to the neighborhood concerns and the community concerns and get us the best possible proposal through this ULEF process, and that this is our historic moment to close the jails on Rikers Island and to build the justice system that everyone is urgently calling for.
Although it sounds like, so within 90 days, we know the rehab, the mental health programs, the workforce development programs, the reentry programs, and all of that is going to deliver in the same...
And I mean, if the question is, what are the programming opportunities that are available right now in Rikers, what is the programming changes that are going to be in the new borough facilities? And I think we can speak at great length of those, because again, we are not waiting for the new borough facilities to develop the programs. That is why there's...
I'm asking about the jail facilities that the application is for. So my point is that before the final ULEF, I would hope that there would be a true cohesive plan on how we're going to deliver those services, how many square meters is going to be in the new facility, and all of that before the final vote.
Yeah, we would be more than happy to answer and provide that information about reentry programming. And I don't know if you want DOC to speak to any of that.
No, I just want to make it clear that I am truly concerned that it's 90 days away. And we've been doing this for years. So I guess I am very concerned about the fact that we don't have, like, all those details. If you might have them, if you have them over, that's great.
Right. What we are working on is the building makeup given the new eleven hundred million bed population. I think we could provide you with various little comments right now about square footage allocated to counseling space, the programming phase, the therapeutic spaces that we've developed, and how we will be delivering, you know, population sense of programming in our new space. All we're applying is the size of the building, the availability of the coverage.
So if you could just say it again, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make you all get up for this. So before we do our decision, just if you can get me all that information. And also explain to me how, we want to make sure this is different than the treatment that people have in their neighborhood, right? A building in the facility doesn't exactly mean that we're going to be treated better. And so we need to make sure they're involved at the same time. Next, we have Ben from Barstool.
Hi.
That's it?
Got to get to reentry programming.
Huh?
Got to get to reentry programming.
Okay, that's good, that's good. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you for really engaging deeply on the details of this specific plan. I think that's just the right attitude, and I really appreciate that officials are doing that, so thank you. I'm here because I care deeply about my community and safety, but also about the values reflected in the decisions that we take together. I live just a few blocks away, just off Queens Boulevard, and I love Queens, I love the people, I love the communities, and I love the food, which I really think is the best kept secret in any American city at this point. It's the most diverse place in the world, but we are also very segregated along racial, ethnic, and class lines. Our criminal justice system is a national shame for its unfair scandalous treatment in many cases, particularly of our black and blacknecks neighbors, not just incarcerated people, but their families. Rikers Island is the most horrible local manifestation of that shame. We need a system that is more efficient, more just, and safer by preventing recidivism. We need a new facility that will address the real causes of crime on our streets and with space for job training, classrooms, counseling, and substance abuse treatment. We need to stop punishing children who just want to visit their parents without traveling and waiting for hours and being terrorized by an outdated system based on fear. This plan, as you've heard, does much to address those needs, and I really appreciate you engaging with it. Saying no now does nothing to address those needs and squanders an essential opportunity. We have this chance to reduce the incarcerated population and recidivism, to start healing the open wound that is Rikers, and to begin building a fair 21st century justice system that lives up to the promise of liberty and justice for all. Saying no is just too easy for me as a local resident. So I ask you to continue to do the hard work that you've been doing in this meeting to shape this project in a positive direction instead for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Evan from Barstool.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Or afternoon, whatever we're up to. My name's Ellen McCarty. I am in Adversity, which is not a five-minute walk from here, in Daco. Vivian, I would like to start with addressing our absentee mayor, Bill de Blasio, and his office director. Whilst your jail is built with our money and against our will, you do nothing to address the much larger problem at hand facing our community, a problem that causes people to be imprisoned in the first place, a problem that has a very simple solution. If there is to be a towering, dirty, story building built here in Kew Gardens, then it could only have one purpose: affordable housing for low and middle-income citizens of our district, longtime residents on fixed incomes like our seniors, our veterans, and the disabled, where they can stay in their own neighborhood and near their families, friends, and neighbors when their rent becomes too high. Why can't billions of our dollars go to build affordable housing that prioritizes these low-income residents of our community as well as the most vulnerable amongst us? What of those people? What of them? We need a community center. Make it free so there are no barriers to entry. Why are we putting money into jails to lock up troubled youths when we could be building pools, basketball courts, and gymnasiums to keep them out of trouble? It takes a village, and it takes our borough. The base of this building could form a place for recreation. I ask all of those in power that we can find $3 billion to lock people up, then why can't we find $10 billion for decent housing? The mayor's office, despite claiming to desire new affordable housing, seems to be blind to this issue. While New Yorkers have always known high rents, a new generation is learning the term "house poor." According to the New York Times, in the late 70s, the average family spent 50% of its income on mortgage, healthcare, insurance, taxes, and car payments. They can spend about 75% of their incomes on these essentials, largely because of higher housing costs. According to the, even average families face homelessness. According to the Coalition for the Homeless, 1/3 of families with children in shelters have a working family member, yet they remain unable to find an affordable apartment in our city. This affects our innocent children in ways you cannot imagine. Are you aware of that? According to the National Network for Youth, 50% of homeless youths drop out of high school, and that they are more likely to resort to illegal activity. Illegal activity, of course, leads to arrests, and arrests, of course, leads to incarceration. I address my taxpayers in this room. Your tax dollars can be spent to build a jail cell or can be spent to prevent a wayward youth from filling that jail cell in the first place.
Thank you.
By voting for this jail, you're continuing to create less poverty. My name is Ellen McCarty, and I'm running for civic council.
Which is outside the polls, please.
I know.
Thank you.
I am.
Fred Parker from Justice Leadership. Please. Is he here?
Yes, yes. Good afternoon. Want to thank you for this opportunity to test on this. My name is Fred Parker. I'm a directly impacted Queens resident, small area, Fort Rockaway. I spent two years on Rikers Island, and I know several people on that George R. Island right now. I even know people who work there, both security and civilians. I know from my own experience, from my family's experience, from my community's experience, that Rikers Island must be closed now. This can be done by reducing the number of people being held in pre-trial confinement. In fact, pressure from advocates such as Justice Leadership USA has already made this happen, and a bill reform can be fought for to reduce that number even more. As it stands, Rikers Island cannot be adequately monitored, and I'm sure we can all agree that Rikers Island is a distant, isolated, 400-acre penal county, where in my experience, I witnessed human demoralization firsthand. I experienced demoralizing strip searches on one of my corrections offices. My meals were withheld for three days on a 73 shift, and that's breakfast in us, that's two meals a day. But at least I was detained at the time. I live in Long Island City now, but I'm from Fort Rockaway. And for those two years on Rikers Island, my family had to endure three hours of travel in several different buses in order to visit me for one hour, and that's if they even got in, not to mention the horror stories of how they were treated by correction staff during the intake process. And unless those are, I can go on further about that one. Also, I wanted to, as a Queens resident, Fort Rockaway, I wanted to also address and advocate for the progress down there, where I believe that the Department of Health should play a more major role in monitoring and interacting with the residents of these facilities while the Department of Corrections will maintain their role as a security, as a security facility. Also, I want to say that, I thought about it, I've listened to you speak, you said you, President Cass, you said that you're listening to the community of Kew Gardens, but there's a whole other community out there, Long Island City, Queensbury, Woodside, Fort Rockaway. It's not just them. I just wanted to ask you, what about those people, you know, so it's more than just Kew Gardens. So I wanted to make that serious.
Yeah, I think we're listening to everybody, which is why I've encouraged the stories, even though I'm normally going to tell them the stories, because I think they're important for everyone to hear.
And that's also that I wanted to think, because I know you said it's specific on the way they approach it, and I wanted to think about how we express my story. I also wanted to say that I just wanted to ask you, you know, if you give your vote on this proposal, as yes, with the conditions of a closed Rikers campaign, under those conditions. Thank you.
And for the rest of the folks that are speaking, if you could focus a little bit on, I know you all have prepared testimony mostly, but on what you'd like to see at the new facility. I think that's extremely important, wherever it is. And maybe if you touch on the size, you think it should be, whether you think it's too big, whether you think that we have the bench will kill them, all that kind of stuff. I think Carrie is just going to hear some of that. People shake things up a little bit here. It's Kiraly, is she not here? Darren Neff, Justice Department.
No, I'm actually Brandon Holmes, dad is Steve, but if my name is called later, it'll take my side. My name is Brandon Holmes, and I'm a resident of Bed-Stuy in Brooklyn. Four years ago, I lived on Kew Gardens Road, across from the Maple Grove Cemetery, and for 15 years, I spent every summer attending the Police Athletic League Day Camp and staying with my family members who lived in Bricktown, Cambria Heights, Springfield Gardens in Jamaica. My single mother, a public school teacher, needed those summers to recharge and was made, and made sure that I was caring. made, and made sure that I was cared for and loved by the same folks who had raised her. When I was 15 years old, my aunt was sent to Rikers Island for selling heroin. Two years later, her son, who was the same age as me, was tried as an adult at 17, when he was pulled over driving his friend who had several ounces of marijuana and a loaded gun. Because of the conditions of their offenses, even with the bail legislation that our organization fought for and secured that will be implemented January 2020, my relatives would still be locked up on Rikers Island, even with bail reform. So we've heard from people who've had the privilege to never experience Rikers Island with our loved ones experiencing the conditions of Rikers Island, asking to stop this plan because it is not perfect, because it is not what they want to see, instead of presenting what they do want to see, giving us tangible solutions or outcomes that they want to see to support this plan. We have not heard anyone from the Queens Community Board, both eight and nine, vote no with conditions. It was just a resounding no. And a vote no without any conditions or contemplation of decarceration or the calls of criminal justice reform is a vote to keep Rikers Island open. And we want to be explicit and clear about that. We ask that you vote yes with conditions, and those conditions being that we reduce our city's capacity to incarcerate or cage anyone from 15,000 beds to 3,000 or below, which would be below the city's current 4,000 projection. Improvement in conditions for all incarcerated New Yorkers. Someone, I'm sorry, I was sitting in the back, I didn't see, but someone had asked a question about how the temperature is so inhumane on Rikers. You know, many of our staff and my relatives, our loved ones, have talked about how the walls actually sweat at Rikers, that people will be in their cells stripping naked because that's the only reprieve that they get, right? And we've heard over and over from folks, both NIMBY groups and No New Jails organizers, that better jails or better prisons do not exist, and this is fundamentally wrong. We know through the leaders in the prison labor movement and the prisoners' rights movement that conditions are very important, especially for people who do not have many things to hope for, or many things to look forward to day to day. We need to improve conditions and center that in this conversation. So I will submit my testimony in writing, but I ask you to vote yes with conditions.
Just a very good question. So the proposal in front of us is for 5,000. The city's lowering it to 4,000, which I am of belief that if we have 4,000 beds, the city's going to try to fill them. But the question I have is, and that's anywhere in the world, right? I believe in community-based jails, but I don't, I don't think we should just be replacing one bad institution with other bad institutions. But the question I have is, should it be lowered to 3,000 before the vote at the council? Or do we think that it's okay just to figure out what happens after? Because that may be, maybe they've been working so closely with everybody that we feel that they'll do it anyway.
So we've seen, we've seen design, we've seen design-build processes and architectural plans in other cities in the U.S. that have actually presented models where you can take beds offline, right? So if the population reaches a certain point, we can get to a point where we pass legislation that's directly tied to the performance of whichever agency is overseeing facilities to say, if we go for 90 days where there is a vacancy of 100 beds, we should begin the process of taking those beds offline and repurposing those areas to whatever programs or services we could increase there. So we can continue to lock the city into the trends of decarceration. And I also want to mention that this idea that if you build them, they will fill them. I love hearing people, you know, share that narrative and share those talking points because as an advocate and as an organizer, that is something that is very near and dear to my heart. But we have to realize that we currently have 15,000 beds in New York City. A proposal for 4,000 beds is an 11,000-bed reduction. If you fill them, you would never get to the current point today, where we're at 7,500. You would not be able to fill those beds. Right now, shutting this plan down leaves us with capacity to cage thousands more.
Can you send the documents to me, the standards, you know, what, what the targets are to make sure that we load those? I appreciate it. Thank you. We have next Brendan, are you the speaker? Tia?
Hi, Tia, seated very kind to me. My name is Will Deep, I'm an organizer from KC's Rising Up and Moving. We're a membership organization of over 4,000 working class IndoCaribbean South Asian committee members, many who have faced immigration issues such as being in detention, some who have also been in Rikers and have had fun time upstate. We believe that we should invest the money, the 11 million, into our communities, stop the cycle of colonization, stop the cycle of poverty that happens in Black and Brown communities. Myself, I organize in our South Queens space, which includes many places that would be impacted with a borough-based jail. We believe that investing in healthcare, good transportation, job programs is what's needed for our communities so we can stop the cycle of poverty. We believe that we don't need to build four new jails, we need to close Rikers now because of what everyone has been saying. And we can invest that $11 billion into what's needed for our communities, that's needed to really revitalize communities and really uplift and really stop a cycle, so stop colonization. And yes, while we are, while we are going on a trend of decarceration, the data shows that the majority of people on Rikers can be released because most folks are actually waiting pre-trial or ending cash bail, and are still waiting for the reforms of Albany to really incarcerate Rikers and close Rikers. But we really need to think about how are we investing in communities, really investing in those that really need the support? And for example, this is going to be a women's jail. Why don't we actually, like, many women are going to jail right now because they're survivors of domestic violence. Why don't we actually invest in survivor services that are most needed for, especially survivors? Thank you.
So just, so you're against the Kew-based jails and proposing Rikers? Stephen from the Fortune Society.
I think he had to leave, yeah.
Huh?
He left to go back to the ground. We'll, we'll see his time to this joke.
No, no, no. Fortune Society? Anybody here from the Fortune Society that that is true?
We're here.
No, to testify for the Fortune Society?
Yes, Jamie Olushka.
Orion Sykes is not here either?
No, they actually went back to.
They're back to work.
Yeah. Hi, how are you? My name is, yeah, my name is Jamie Olushka. I'm a proud daughter of Queens. Whenever anyone asks and they can vouch for me, I always say that I'm Queens through and through, born and bred. So it's an honor to stand here and to hold the values that I know that I was raised, true Queens values, true New York values, and share them with you. So I proudly serve at the Fortune Society, and I also currently teach a creative writing workshop, I'll be there tomorrow, on Rikers Island. I am lucky enough to get to work with gentlemen that are in enhanced restraint. I would like to bring them into the space that they are the reason that I'm here and why Rikers Island needs to close. So New York City holds legal system reform up as a progressive priority while allowing an 84-year-old jail complex with a documented, deep-seated culture of violence to continue operating. There cannot be further discussions about meaningful criminal justice reform in New York City until we close Rikers. At Fortune, we have been fighting for criminal justice reform alongside our allies for over 50 years, and we will continue to stand united with our allies in this fight to close Rikers until we see every last cell destroyed. Now, this movement is much larger than any one person. It's larger than former Speaker Mark Faberito, it's larger than Judge Littman, it's larger than Mayor de Blasio, and this movement is well over 50 years strong and has outlasted many administrations and political climates, and rest assured, we persevere to continue fighting for the rights of people impacted by the legal system for decades to come. Fortune's leadership are members of the Littman Commission and appointees of the mayor's Justice Inclusion Task Force. We believe in the Borough-Based Jail Initiative, not only because members of our agency helped directly inform the plan, but because it was informed specifically by people who spent time on Rikers who had led this movement to where it is today. The Fortune Society has always recognized the value and importance of prioritizing the experiences of people directly impacted as they personally understand the harsh realities of the legal system. To not support a plan informed and led directly by leaders with lived experience as part of a profound, decade-long movement would be counterintuitive to the values of our mission. The Borough-Based Jail Initiative is the only practical approach that will allow New York City to see, which will allow New York City to see Rikers close within the next decade, hopefully sooner. Rikers Island intentionally exacerbates feelings of isolation and barriers to human contact, being far removed when community reinforces harmful stigma and stereotypes. I support this plan as an opportunity to be more thoughtful about the way we treat people within our justice system. I support this plan with conditions because it was created with input from people who have personally, who have personally experienced the horrors of Rikers, and their voices were and continue to be paramount in this process. They know that closing Rikers is urgent and cannot be delayed. I hope that you do too. That's right.
I want to get louder on topic. I want to try to get through many people that are still here. I go from Briarwood, Fort. Miguel, better chief.
What's the, what's the name?
Briarwood, Silver.
So before I begin my prepared testimony, I just wanted to say that, you know, the reason why is when people are directly impacted, you spend time on Rikers, you share your stories of Rikers is because this plan doesn't exist in a vacuum, right? This is not just, you know, the whole point of creating this plan is to close Rikers, so their stories are not irrelevant, you know, this is not just about size or traffic, like, these stories are, are the reason why this plan even exists.
Which is why we're here. Yeah, that's why I'm letting, that's why they're really not, you can have closing Rikers, which I think most people believe in, including me, but you also could talk about just the application, which is normally the protocol here, but because I think the stories are so important, we're here. That's good.
Thank you, appreciate that. So my name is Miss Al Silver. I'm Program Associate in the Independent Commission on New York City Criminal Justice and Incarceration Reform. Our commission unanimously concluded that Rikers was closed permanently, that New York City must detain many fewer people in jail, and that the city must move to a smaller system of detention in each borough. The city's plan follows many of our recommendations, and although there are a number of ways the plan can be approved, the commission supports the city's plan. While I am a staff member of the commission, I'd like to put to my testimony on my perspective as a lifelong resident of Briarwood. I'm a proud child of patient immigrants, a proud Queens native, Briarwood resident, and alum of PS99. I started going to PS99 in 2000, two years before the closure of Queens Detention Center. My mom and I walked past a detention center in the courthouse every day on my way to school, and neither of us ever felt unsafe walking past it, nor did I have any conception that that building was a jail as a child. I want to recenter what has become a conversation about buildings and what should be a conversation about human beings. This historic moment in New York City is not about whether we want to have new jails or not, this moment is about whether we want the Rikers jails to exist or not. No one understands the urgency and necessity to close Rikers better than those who have survived it. They know better than anyone the culture of brutality and punishment at Rikers, and they know better than anyone how difficult it can be to succeed when you are released, especially when you have been detained on a toxic, asbestos-filled, methane-depositing, isolated penal colony, and have lost connections with family, community members, and supportive services. Concerns about the height of a building, train concession, parking, and related issues cannot be prioritized over human lives. I support the construction of a detention facility in my adjacent neighborhood because it will end a cycle of brutality and punishment that New Yorkers, especially Black and Latinx New Yorkers, have endured for decades. While the concerns of Kew Gardens and adjacent neighborhoods like my own must continue to be addressed, the concerns of all communities of Queens, especially communities in South Jamaica, far walkaway, and Western Queens, who continue to be police and incarcerated at higher rates than any other areas in the borough, must be addressed as well. Queens community members who have been incarcerated or impacted by incarceration are the people who will most be impacted by efforts to close Rikers, and I implore you to keep them in mind and vote in support of the plan. Thank you.
Kendra from Exodus Transitional Community.
Good afternoon, I want to thank you for having us here to testify. My name is Kendra Black. I'm a community resident. I live right on 76 Road, so it's walking distance from, from this facility. And I'm also formerly incarcerated. In fact, I have six felonies and thirty misdemeanors on my rap sheet, so I'm not just someone who's made one or two mistakes. I've made a lot of mistakes in my life. And when in addition to those mistakes, a lot of those mistakes were because of root causes that were not addressed, such as untreated mental health, substance use, prolonged trauma, over-minimization of violence, living in domestic violence. So for these reasons, I've been working, you know, strategically around how can we get to a plan where we can incarcerate as many as possible, and how we can really create new programming and create a new atmosphere, new culture. So when you keep asking, like, DOC or Mach J, what programming is being run, they're not running the programming on Rikers. The nonprofit service providers are the ones that actually create the curriculum, get it approved, and we're the ones that are providing the programming. So when you're asking questions about culture, a lot of that is, you're asking kind of the wrong people. You need to be sitting down with us, who are advocates and are actually working and providing these programming, and we're the ones that are sitting here, you know, when you talk about Beyond Rosy's, that's the campaign that moved, you know, really helped to push the mayor's office to create a centralized facility for women. We actually believe the numbers for women can get down to 100, and I'd be happy to share all of our information. In fact, we've been trying to reach out to the offices to try to get you guys to come meet with us so you can see this plan. In addition to getting that number down to 100, if you had the number down to 100 and you wanted it decentralized, that would be 25 women in each wing of a men's borough-based facility. You're not going to get any programming. Nonprofits are not going to be able to provide the services. When the gentleman talked about here, up here earlier, about the heating and cooling on Rikers, yeah, when the walls are sweltering, and you're a woman, and you want to just lay yourself naked, you have male officers that are standing over and watching you through your windows, who are sexually harassed, dehumanized, abused daily. We know that by creating a standalone, and we actually, in the Beyond Rosy campaign, don't want the facility in Queens. We want a standalone site that is completely removed from any of the four men's borough-based facilities. And we're working with American prison and native system now to design curriculum that we can incorporate into a tablet as well as have facilitators go in. So really, please come to us and ask us, when you're talking about designs, what the facility wants to look like, because we're the ones that are really working on it, and we know what we want. And what's going to work, because we've been directly impacted, so we've been through it, we know what works, we have the solution. And also, I really want to implore the Borough President's Office to make sure that they have all the facts straight. There has been, I've been sitting in meetings, I've been pointing to Queens Neighborhood Advisory Council, I've been at all the community board hearings and meetings, there has been a ton of false information that has been given by community board members, and they should be held accountable for that. Make sure that you have all the information and all the facts before you vote on this, and please vote the asking conditions.
So are you working with, with DOC now on not only Rosy, but like, all of Rikers for your services?
All I can, services are provided primarily through Fortune Society and Osborne Association, and then there's seven smart providers that are all grantary organizations too that come in. I work at Exodus, I just left Fortune Society, and I work at Exodus Transitional Community, so I was just previously.
And do the nonprofits that are delivering the services feel that they have enough access and tools and resources to service the people on Rikers in order to have good reentry and have them better coming out than they went in?
Not at all. We need more funding, access, and services, and one thing that we also need is the culture of DOC to shift. Even when we try to provide services or we write curriculum, we're told by the crushes that that's too radical, or that's too empowering, quote unquote. So it seems like they don't want our people to... So it seems like they don't want our people to be empowered. They don't want those cycles to be broken. And DOC's budget has now been reduced since the eighties, but our criminal justice population has reduced from twenty-two thousand to now seventy-five hundred. Yet the officers are still getting the same type of budget, and our people are still suffering. And a woman just died on Friday. A man just died on Sunday. A month ago, a man died from dehydration. Like, this is a human rights crisis.
It is. So solitary confinement should be abolished. So, but understand that when I'm asking DOC about programs, what they're planning on the individual sites, I am trying to get them to commit to a certain amount of the services, knowing that on Rikers, there is a vast understanding that it isn't enough. And so my desire is that if we're going to put community-based jails that we have, because we need them. People need to be close to their homes. They need to be close to their families. But they also need the services that right now, we keep hearing from groups that they're not getting on Rikers. And so I'm trying to commit people to make this better and not just spread.
Oh, absolutely. And that's what we want also. And I just want to add to you that alternative to incarceration programs, we serve people who are facing serious violent felonies. Some of them are facing up to twenty years upstate. And we're servicing them in our service provider space, and there's not gang violence. We have different gang members sitting up together. There's not violence on staff. There's not violence on us. That's why we're really, you know, imploring that there's a new staffing structure, that the job descriptions of these new facilities actually meet the people's needs as opposed to security. We don't need security guards. We need mental health providers, educators, employment trainers. And we've been doing it out here. We have the solutions.
Absolutely hear that. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you have, just so everybody knows where we are, we have at least eight or ten people testifying against and at least twelve to fifteen people testifying for. So feel free at any time to say against, for, but feel free also to testify. Linda Rosenbaum, Linda at Kew Gardens.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Linda Rosenbaum. I live here in Kew Gardens. And I am opposed to the recommendation of this jail here in Kew Gardens, or any of the other boroughs, for that matter. Depending on the size, all I hear is that we're going to reduce the population and then they're going to put a thirty-story jail here. Why is that necessary? Man's inhumanity to man is not going to change with a building. And Rikers Island is a disgrace to humanity.
That's right.
And I'm all in favor of closing Rikers Island as it is now. However, this Kew Gardens area is predominantly residential. Getting down Queens Boulevard from 2:30 to 6:30 right now is virtually impossible. And that will certainly be impacted with six hundred spots for staff and six hundred spots for visitors or public. It just seems like the homework being done to justify putting the building here has not been done. The community circle was not ready to participate. And this has been in the works for years. We only heard about it about a year ago, a year and a half ago perhaps. I don't know what the feasibility of redoing Rikers Island is. I think it should have been addressed. I think studies have showed that it's recommended for prisons to be horizontal, not vertical, that it is much more manageable in that sort of situation. I think that certainly there needs to be, all of the programs that are being discussed, they need to be improved because our incarceration history is horrific. And I think it certainly can be improved. I just don't think that this is the place to put a thirty-story building. This is not a place to bring in six hundred more cars. They just built a building just beyond here that has also increased, will increase the traffic. You can't get from point A to point B around here from 2:30 to 6:30 as it is. So now we have another housing development that just went up and more cars. It just doesn't seem to me like the people who live here, what about the taxpayers, the law-abiding citizens? And what about our rights? And I do believe that we have to address the rights of the incarcerated, absolutely. But what about our rights? We have rights too. And Con Ed is having difficulty providing the electrical situation as it exists right now. And there, the Silver Towers, and they just came in and rewired all of our lighting into these LED lights at their expense so that they can minimize our electricity use.
Thank you very much. All right, did you have written testimony as well? Just let me know what to say. Written testimony?
Excuse me?
Your written testimony with Kew?
Yes.
Right, so you can also leave it with us too.
Okay.
Thank you very much. By the way, everybody here can do that too. If you want to leave your written testimony as well, take that as well. Charlotte from Parsons.
Mayor de Blasio has given us an ill-conceived plan, masquerading as jails in the mantle of criminal justice reform in order to stifle opposition. The fact is that not one of the objectives of this initiative has been fulfilled. The Lipman Commission recommended closing Rikers and opening smaller jails in non-residential areas for no more than five hundred detainees. The exact opposite is happening. The jails are going into densely populated residential areas. The jails are not small. They are larger than any building in Rikers, each getting fourteen hundred quarters. Under the false premise that new jails equals justice reform, it's okay to change zoning laws to give us empty stadiums, oversized structures. It's okay to demap streets. It's okay to add thousands of people to already bursting trains, platforms, and buses. It's okay to disregard the city's own environmental study that adverse impacts of increased traffic cannot be mitigated. It's okay to turn a blind eye to greenhouse emissions and pedestrian safety. All this from a mayor who purports to be green and progressive. Who stands to benefit from this massive building project? Not even the detainees. They will be entombed in experimental towers with less outdoor recreation than they have. Queens detainees will not be any closer to their families and to the courts because most will come from the other boroughs. Only the vendors benefit. Perkins Eastman has paid eight million for the plan, and A. Tom Hill has afforded a contract for a hundred-seven million. How presumptuous and financially irresponsible of the mayor to contractually obligate the city before the plan had even been voted on by the city council. This has been the most undemocratic process from the outside, with the mayor barring the press from all meetings in order to keep the plan under the radar. This is the first time in New York City history that a design-built project is being rushed through the Yular process with one single up-and-down vote for all four boroughs. The community boards in the impacted areas have all spoken loud and clear against the jails. We thank and applaud you, Linda, for announcing that you will vote against. We ask you as our leader to inspire the city council members to do the same. If this initiative goes through against the will of the people with its failed objectives and unjustified astronomical costs, both financial and societal, it will be a travesty of our democracy and a sad day for the city of New York.
Thank you. To be clear, I said I can see a scenario. I want to hear the testimony today as well, though, especially about, again, people are still waiting to testify. I'd like to hear about the size of the jails, the confidence that the city is going to lower the numbers after it is passed by Yular, and the confidence that the services right now, because people are saying they're not getting on Rikers, who actually delivers in the community jails. Next, we have Darlene Jackson from Beyond Rosies. Does she comes in?
Yeah. So what I started saying before I read my prepared testimony is that closing a public hearing at 10:30 a.m. is not actually a democratic process. It's right. But most of the points I brought to Queens, sorry.
You mean that it's in the morning? I mean, 10:30 is...
So, yeah. So not everyone's fortunate enough to be paid during this time. A lot of folks have to leave the states because they have to get back to their jobs. So every other borough president was exempt from the votes afterward. So I just wanted to point that out because not everyone's getting empty as this hearing is. It's people who don't want.
So we always have problems with that, right? Because nine people need to go home, so much families, or they gotta go to work. So we've always had issues of why they should be. So historically, it's been 10:30. But everybody here should know, should be able to sound too. Now, you're always welcome to hand in written testimony, and we accepted, I think, for ten days after the hearing. And so we'd be happy to take all written testimony as well. And so if you know anybody that wanted to come today and we would be able to have also that wants to put in that testimony, it would be very helpful and accepted. Thank you.
So again, my name is Darlene Jackson. I'm speaking on behalf of the Beyond Rosies campaign. I propose a goal to the Center by 2020. We appreciate the opportunity to address the Queens Borough Board as members of, oh, I'm sorry. I have my screen is kind of quiet, I'm sorry. As a provider of housing and services for justice impacted women and families, we support the plan to build borough-based facilities to enable the fastest possible closure of jails on Rikers Island. We want to urge your office to vote yes with conditions. We want the conditions added to reflect the priorities we've identified for how we want to change and shape this plan before it gets to the city council to vote no. There's a pressing need for criminal justice reform in New York City. Approximately eighty-one percent of women at all female jails on Rikers Island, the Rose and Singing Center, known as Rosies, are pre-trial detainees, many of whom remain there for several months waiting for their case to be resolved. The conditions on Rikers are notoriously troubling and are the, sorry, are troubling as far as the $302,000 annual, which is $810 a day, causes to an individual. We, I'm sorry. My phone is seriously quiet, so I'm just really hard to hear. We and the women we serve know firsthand just how terribly disruptive any state, even one day, are Rikers is. There are fewer than five hundred women housed in Rosies, and many of whom match the following profile. Eighty percent report a history of trauma and violence. Sixty percent suffer from mental illness. Eighty-five percent self-report substance use disorders. Two-thirds are experiencing homelessness, and many are on the verge of homelessness. Two-thirds are mothers, and eighty percent are women of color. In 2016, Housing Plus convened a meeting with Green Hope Services for Women, Our Children, Providence House, and the Women's Prison Association, agencies where they focus on serving women in the criminal justice system. We established the Women's Criminal Justice Association with a vision to build a community-based housing alternative to the detention for women charged with non-violent misdemeanors and felonies. Our belief is that community-based housing positively impacts the lives of the women, their families, and the community. In July 2017, the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice awarded us a three-year demonstration grant to establish forty-nine units of transitional housing. Over the past year, we have moved a hundred and fifty women off of Rikers Island into housing. An external evaluation of the project's first year is underway and will be completed in the spring of 2019 with already promising results. The majority of women have successfully resolved their court cases, enrolled in, and are attending programs, apply for needed benefits, found jobs, be related with family members, and move into permanent housing. Sorry. So WCGA supports the city's choice to keep the women in one centralized location that will ensure fidelity, oversight, and adherence to evidence-based practices that address the needs of women and their families while promoting continuity, I'm sorry, in staffing and training. The next and most important step, however, is ensuring that the people who remain incarcerated are held in facilities in the boroughs that have safer layouts than Rikers, provide better space for programming, and services are more accessible for families outside, and people's lawyers have increased access to light and fresh air and are located closer to the courthouses. There should be one standalone facility for women with a nursery and services that are gender and trauma-informed to support what women and families need. Our ongoing commitment to do more for women experiencing homelessness in New York City has led to an exciting new opportunity. Housing Plus recently embarked in our first ever partnership with private sector stakeholders to create even more affordable permanent housing for women and children in need. This effort is currently under development near our existing housing sites in East New York, and is a collaborative partnership between Housing Plus, it's a bunch of folks. This project will include housing, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can we, but I would like your testimony. You can send it to us too. I would like to hear the end of it. There's just going to be a lot of people here. Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So are you in agreement, or how do you feel about the standalone facility for women versus the plan that this is, which is that it's combined with the men in the same facility?
So just to agree to what Kendra Flack had stated. So it doesn't make sense, it didn't make sense how women within a borough-based facility, because as far as like the nonprofits are actually doing the work on the ground to provide adequate services. So it makes sense to have a centralized site. However, this proposed plan is not a centralized location. As I was saying before, the woman that's going to be housed in this wing is going to be from all the five boroughs. So that's what we're asking for a standalone site in Manhattan. And also to answer your questions about programming, we do strongly believe that any new facilities, whether it's a four-borough-based facilities or a standalone site for women, is operated by nonprofits and that DOC is only there for at the very minimum for safety.
So I'm asking a specific question. This plan, this mayor's plan
Yes.
puts the women in Queens County in the same facility as the men, but they're, I guess they have their own area. Is that good, bad, or we should vote for the condition that they're separate, in a separate facility? I'm just, I'm just trying to get...
All right, first and foremost, I would...
It's not a test, I'm just trying to get your...
No, I think it's, first and foremost, I would like to thank MACJ, who has been very, has made any effort to try to consider folks who are impacted who ask for a centralized facility. So we want to thank you guys. So with this, we support the closure of the whole entire Rikers Island for these voice sites, and we thank the folks at MACJ for listening to the voice of the women that are impacted to have them set in Queens. But we're asking for a standalone site in Manhattan.
Okay. I appreciate that. I know, I appreciate that. If you could send me your testimony, I'd appreciate that.
I will.
Sharon, can you pull that? Yeah, so if you'll like queensbp.com. All right, and we'll make sure that... Please, oh, queensbp.org, I apologize. Queensbp.org. Donald? The New York Donald? Thank you very much, Hope Church.
Good afternoon. I am Donald Glockhill from Hope Astoria. I am the Director of Justice, Youth, and Outreach there. And I have been an educator and activist for a while. I've taught young men that I went to Rikers and young men that came from, I went into Rikers. So I agree with everybody that... I truly believe that community is the best place for support. Isolation provides for a lack of accountability. Sort of similar to what we seen in Brooklyn, we saw those in the Brooklyn Detention Center being treated in a, sorry, in a humane way and being within the community allowed for that to be stopped. And that's what community does. I just really don't believe isolation is helpful to us as a people and somebody said in reference to, you know, investing money in the community instead of this. And I just wanted to be a reminder that, you know, those people that are in Rikers, they are part of the community as well. They are sons, daughters, husbands, wives, mothers, and fathers as well. They are part of the community. And I just think that it's important that we continue to focus on this because, you know, when something's not on the calendar, it gets delayed and it never happens. And so, like Marla Luther King said, a right denied is a right delayed, a right delayed is a right denied. We have to be very conscious of that. And so, for the same reasons, accountability, family support is very important. And I just, I really think that we have to realize when we have a good corrections system, rehabilitation system, that pours back into our community because our people, our men and women, come back and they're better assets to society, whereas it causes low recidivism. And that is a benefit to society. And if we try to push people out, like, out of our society, it's still, we're still paying for it. Tax dollars, we're still going to pay for wherever it goes, so why not do the better way? And so, I just believe if we work together towards the plan and the time, it'll be the best situation. And I just really think there's a fear that this proposal is not safe. And there's no stats or data that really backs that up and that I've heard today and that I haven't heard, I'd love to hear it, but I just, I think this is the best way and I think we should work hard together to help make the proposal happen.
Thank you very much. Can you see yourself in the comments? If you don't think our president, Sharon Lee, is going to take over, I'll just come back in ten minutes, okay?
All right, up next, we have Ellen of CPC speaking against. Ellen will be followed by Carol.
Ellen left, she has to leave.
Pardon?
Ellen left.
Ellen has to leave. Ellen left.
Yeah.
Sherman Kane, for 49, speaking against. Sherman will be followed by Carol, speaking for. Will be followed by last name Bergen, KCCAs, who's next.
My name is Sherman Kane. I'm co-chair of the Land Use Committee of the Community of 49. And I'm a poet to this land. I have never seen a U-Look or a design bill before. And if you shouldn't do a design before you do a U-Look, you can't do a U-Look with a design bill. You can't U-Look a concept. In addition, the financing on this plan, I've never seen this, a plan that was rushed like this. This has been a steamroller. This is a done deal and there has been no community involvement whatsoever. The community involvement did not exist, even though everybody says there was community involvement, there was no community involvement. Community learned about this way too late in the process. What is the rush to do this process? What is the rush? Councilmember Robert Holden proposed a bill on the City Council to study what would take to rehabilitate Rikers. You could provide air conditioning, you could provide secure ferry service to access Rikers, you could do all kinds of stuff. With the $11 billion that they're planning to finance this proposal, you could do all those things. And the other issue is they should start this plan over. They should just start it over and from scratch. And they don't do a lot of thinking about what they were planning to do. This is a half-baked plan and I don't understand how this got to this point.
Thank you, Mr. Kane, for taking the time to deliver your testimony in person. Up next, Carol.
I'm Assistant Attorney for Justice.
Speaking for, followed by an individual with the last name Bergen, who's next. Hi, Ms. Carol. Is this Carrie?
Yes, it is. Good afternoon, one and Carol, with your Assistant Attorney for Justice. I'm currently have, because I'm going on the way to the height of the prison, but I am in favor because I'm a mother who has a child on Rikers Island. And when you go over Rikers Island, I know there's a stick. Your squat over bridge is a very stiff, is a dummy. When you go inside, as an adult, I'm an elder woman, standing up on that line, it's bad for my knee, there's no access to that. When I heard that Mayor Blackhill decided to do, and the other organization decided to do this, I was in favor right away because we are having, every day we look at the news, there's young men, young women, they're dying in that facility. They've been abused in that facility, there's corruption of death getting hurt in that facility. So, if we're going to wait till something is better, we'll never get started. This is 2019, not 1920. And we have to make a start and see what the suggestion is, but what we have now is not working. If you have not noticed, it is not working. We have a lot of organizations here that realize that it is not working, people. We need to try something different. Our children are dying, correctional staff is getting hurt, we have to play something in order. Blackhill was the only mayor with a boss that decides to listen, we're going to do something, we're going to try to correct the system. It's breaking my heart because I have a heart. And this is a humane thing for those who don't want to get their area tough luck, you understand? People is dying and you have to realize this is no joke. People is getting hurt and we need to get this thing done. I am in favor, what you said, for the borough-based facilities, and I think we should get started and stop worrying about how it's going to happen, what's going to happen, and put it in practice and then work on it, okay? Every time we thought about the road, how we're going to build a road, how's that going to happen, I was like, um, the plan, the plan, the plan, the plan is going to go to hell. People are in danger. I'm sorry, but it's very emotional for me, okay? And I thank you for listening to me and, you know, like I said, this is 2019, not 1920. We need to reassess what we have now. Rikers Island is a dead zone, you know, people get hurt, like I said, and it's not right for any human consumption, you know, in the area. And we heard somebody talk about two money issues, but when we think about it, how much are we paying per day for someone to be in jail? When we can have program for someone outside to do a program and the same person that's in that community can help the community build. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Kane, for your testimony. For the audience to please kindly refrain from clapping, snapping, cheering, booing. Up next, an individual with the last name Bergen, speaking against.
Mr. Bergen.
Oh, Mr. Berger, I apologize, I'm not able to read this. Is it?
Murray Berger.
Murray Berger. Mr. Berger is speaking against the mayor's proposal. Following Mr. Berger will be Louise Edera, speaking for, followed by Dominic Piston, who's the against.
Dominic. Sorry. Is that Dominic?
Oh, Dominic, sorry, okay. Or Mr. Berger.
I'm glad that Melinda asked all of us to come try out something new because we've all heard everything criticized since last one. The moral imperative, I think, says many, many times, great passion every state, but you're sure this is the moral imperative, is everybody's obligation to govern properly and to extend tax pay to money properly. And these are judgments that help that there are hundreds of thousands of people who need care, that need funding, first gone, to accommodate two, three, or four, or five thousand homeless prisoners, homeless detainees have been, and refugees, for one or three-year period. There are people in passage, I live for a lifetime, people in school, I live for many years, and money is not available there. So, we need better judgment, we need a better triage program, they're all getting city funded. And the mayor's plan throws abuse from that discretion. I'm looking to Corey Johnson, not in January, in reviewing the litmus proposal, where they ask for smaller community jails, and certainly none of their high-rise prisons or jails are small or community. Community jails, I interpret to be jails of three, two, three, or four hundred people, dispersed and service close, close to their loved ones, to the families that will be utilizing them, and to their relatives. This is not what the mayor's plan is about. The mayor's plan is as backwards in that if you look for concept, out of plans, there is no plan in the body, there is no plan. They're playing by ear as they go. The fact that the mayor and board come back in two or three years, after some of the criminal justice before, finally taking place, we're happy to see that. Come back, where we go, how many, it will be after a ton of it.
Thank you, Mr. Berger, for delivering your testimony in person today. Up next, we have Louise Edera, speaking in favor of the mayor's proposal, followed by Dominic Piston, speaking against. Pistoni, I apologize. Dominic Pistoni, followed by Danielle Rosario, speaking for.
Good afternoon. My name is Martin Mayfield. I've been reading testimony for Louis Correa.
Sorry, what was your name?
Martin.
And you're delivering the testimony?
I'm delivering for Louis Correa, yes. My name is Louis Correa, and I lived in Queens many years. I'm also a survivor of Rikers Island. I was just there last year. Rikers Island is made to bring spirit, to bring families apart. The buildings themselves and everything in them are broken, just like the spirit in there. The place is literally falling apart. I was on the painting crew. They had us trying to paint over things, but that will never be enough to fix that place. It can't be fixed. At times, there's one peak, and you have little, and you have one little thin blank there. If you don't have support, you're out of luck. Roaches and mice run around like they own the place. The isolation of Rikers is its own form of torture. The visitation process is found. When you go to the state prisons, your visit is quick. Your family comes in, and you might get six to seven hours with them at Rikers. They wait for four to five hours, going through multiple levels of security. Getting to court for days is another workday. We'd be waking up at 4:00 a.m. to go to the room then to get searched, and we'd be forced to strip down naked in front of other people before going in. Then we'd stay there a couple of hours, often having to sit on the floor before getting driven to court. We'd sometimes spend all day there, given just all sandwiches to eat, and sometimes not even getting to see the judge, and then not get back processed, not get processed back until 8:00 or 9:00 p.m. We cannot keep putting human beings through this degradation. We have to act now. The most important first step is to reduce the jail population, and we can do even better than the city proposed. Instead of 4,000, then can be planning for no more than 3,000 people in city jails in the next few years. We can do this by increasing investments in alternative incarceration and making sure people with serious mental health needs get the treatment they need instead. Anyone who is still detained, we have to build borough-based facilities with much better conditions. People have to have freedom and movement. At Rikers, they kept us locked in homes all day. They called for recreation at 6:00, 7:00, or 8:00 in the morning. Who wants to go there early? Yes, we know we will need to keep an eye on these facilities to make sure the same abuses don't continue, but we have a much better chance of that when they aren't hidden away on the island. With facilities closer to the rest of civilization, with facilities closer to the rest of civilization, we can monitor them and do that more closely, efficiently for families and the community. Rikers Island has another problem. On Rikers, by the time they get over the bridge, the DOC has covered up everything. Before you vote on this proposal, I ask you to go and camouflage yourself and spend one night there, not as the borough president, but just like any other human being caged on that penal colony. And you will see for yourself, and you will know why, urging you to vote yes with different conditions, so we can move forward with a concrete plan to close Rikers and ensure it for two and a half years.
And please, I would appreciate it to the setup. Up next, Dominic Pistoni, speaking against the mayor's proposal, followed by Danielle Rosario, speaking for, followed by Marsha Barrow, speaking against.
My name is Dominic Pistoni. I'm here to speak against this proposal. And asking you to vote against it just doesn't matter that it is fiscally irresponsible. We'd like to find neighborhood action advisory communities, and at the end, when we brought up all sorts of issues that you brought up today, we were told, don't worry about it, it's only a concept. It'll all become detailed when the U-Look is done and we get into the design building process. They said they would get you some stuff, I'm sure you're concerned that in 90 days, we're customers stuck with a concept. They said they would get you something else, you're probably just going to get a more detailed version of what's oriented. Also, the financing is opaque, gives it too much credit. We've heard figures all over the place. We've heard the mayor's put $8.7 billion in the budget just to close Rikers. There's nothing in there about what it's going to cost to build these jails. We've heard $10.6 billion, we've heard $11 billion, we've heard $20 billion. And you can do your own figures and come up with anything short of nine figures. Okay. What worries me is that every dollar spent on bricks and mortar is a dollar we don't have for any of the programs you all want. Kendra, if you think you're underfunded now, why do they spend $20 billion on bricks and mortar?
Please direct, sir, please direct your testimony.
I agree with you.
If people who have here think they're underfunded now, wait until the city spends $20 billion on bricks and mortar. According to the Litman Commission, there's going to be 1,700 people with mental problems who will have to be released because they shouldn't be there, and I don't think they should be there either. I'm just wondering where they're going to go. I'm old enough to remember the 1970s when Governor Hugh Carey closed the mental hospitals. And those of you who aren't, Google it, it's appalling. There was no place to put those people after they closed it because it was too expensive. And I'll tell you where their residences were, our parks and our subway stations. And that's what's going to happen here. You really cannot vote for this with this ill-conceived, rather ill-defined plan with its ill-defined financing. You would hire a contractor to do your kitchen based on squishy plans like this and this unknown financing. Just in terms of economics, there are better places to put this money for all the programs everybody wants, rather than in four pharonic high-rises. Actually, that's a insult to the pharaohs, they at least know what they're doing. This is the kind of thing one would expect of Robert Moses, not of a mayor who says he's progressive. And you're not going to get anything that works. We, by running around and around, mayor and his minions, and we are still here with a concept, and it's not going to change in 90 days. So, just because of the money involved, which will not go to the programs people want, I urge you to vote against this and have them do it right.
Thank you. Danielle from the Fortune Society as well.
My name is Danielle Rosario, and I'm not here today on behalf of any agency. I'm here today as someone who lives just behind the Queens courthouse, right over the footbridge. And I'm here to say that the character of our society is judged by how we treat our most vulnerable members. People confined in our city have documented high rates of mental health, substance treatment needs, chronic health conditions, our survivors of childhood violence, and survivors of intimate partner violence. Freshly assured, we will be judged by how we treat people confined, and not building these jails would be a grave mistake. Many people feel uncomfortable talking about slavery and repairing racial harms in our society today. You can identify these people pretty easily, because they're fidgeting in their seats, they look at the ground, or they whisper to their neighbors at the slightest mention, and they should feel just as uncomfortable opposing the building of these community jails. And if you think what I'm saying isn't true, or these issues aren't connected, you don't have to take my word for it. Statistics on the racial demographics of who we incarcerate in this city and in this country should provide illumination, and if you're still not clear, please read almost anything written by Michelle Alexander, Ryan Stevenson, Ta-Nehisi Coates, and you're welcome to take my copy. Allowing Rikers to continue its operation is a stain on our society's history, and building these borough-based jails is the only practical approach available right now, in this moment, that will allow Rikers Island to close within the next six years. So if this isn't a hearing about closing Rikers Island, let it at least be a hearing about reconstructing the values we hold when we confine the people who are from our own city. In response to your question about what I want to see and what I think, I think this jail should be as large as this city, and lock Jay says that it needs to be, to provide all the services you asked about. Services which are currently provided in the dorm spaces on Rikers Island, right next to where people are showering naked and sleeping, half-dressed with the pale blankets that people are talking about. The building should have as few cells as absolutely necessary with all the sunlight and fresh air that human beings deserve. And I understand, you're concerned about knowing all the final logistics within the ninety-eight timeframe, and that's valid, but that's why you have the option of voting yes or no with conditions until those answers have been provided, and that you can keep moving this process forward using that approach. Please do not prioritize a perfect paperwork and process without having all the answers above people's lives who are currently suffering. And next, to my neighbors here today, who keep saying Dana Kaplan's name like it's some kind of curse word. She's a spokesperson here today, helping present an idea that was created by ninety-one people who are on the mayor's appointed task force, including many of my colleagues and friends, and they are the only people who support this plan. This is a movement. Take a look around, it reaches beyond lines of race, income, education status, and zip code. And if you're gonna talk about the living commission numbers, let's talk about how it is reported, where it has $540 million in cost savings each year after the jail service, and people have transitioned to that. And how about after thirty years into operation, it will continue to generate $1.3 billion of savings annually, and it's a perpetuity for this system. This plan was developed by expertise from people who first endured the suffering and torture spending time on Rikers Island and are now leading this movement, so we're talking about it without laughing today. And all I need to believe that this plan will continue and this design will be done in a way that's meaningful and impactful is to believe in that. And I believe in that, and I think vetting any other direction than to build these community jails is the wrong vote. This is a human rights and a civil rights crisis, and I hope that Queens, my borough where I live, where I will see this jail every day, will vote on the right side of history.
So we believe that there are only two choices here.
Do you believe that?
No, I'm asking. Do you believe there's only two choices here? Either closing Rikers or community-based jails, or can you have both?
No.
With services and with a lot of the things that we know people need in the plan.
Well, what I'd like to ask you is...
No, you're test, you're speaking, Abby.
I guess I believe that...
Try and ask your opinion.
If we have a penal law that still has a city-year sentence, has a remand status, still honors the extradition treaty, and still we have the tax bail as the statute currently stands, then we will still have confinement as part of our system for the foreseeable future. So we will still need a place to confine people. If we do not build a more humane place to confine people, then the only option currently present, because we cannot use NPC, is a federal facility, and these are people housed under state law, is Rikers Island. Now, are you asking, do I believe in rehabilitating Rikers?
No, I'm asking, no, 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 Rikers needs to be shut. That's not the issue. I'm just wondering though, if we, I mean, that's not my issue. Rikers needs to be shut, and we can be very clear on that. What I'm trying to figure out is how to put, how to make sure that the new facilities that are built are up to the standards that people deserve, and that we make sure that we're not replacing one really bad institution with four really bad institutions. And I think that's what I'm trying to get at in this hearing, which is, um, from my perspective, is we're shutting, and that's, that's good, it should be earlier, not later. Um, but I'm just trying to get people's opinions on how to make sure that's done, so we're just not replacing that for that.
From my perspective, you know, despite what community members have said, you know, where I work, I've had the opportunity to been, be involved in these conversations back from when the Litman Commission was formed, and we've had a lot of input. You know, the mayor's office has come and talked to Fortune clients, they've had Fortune chef on all of their discussion. We have regular conversations about this issue. They have convened ninety-one experts from all the areas that are needed to build this plan, from transportation to traffic, to corrections, to people with lived experience, to service providers. There are thirty-seven registered providers that have signed on to support this plan, saying, "Yes, we provide services on Rikers, but it's not being done in a meaningful way because we don't have private space to do it, we don't have enough offices to be able to have the resources that we need. We wanna do it in people's communities so that their loved ones can visit them more often, so that it's less isolating, so that they have better sunlight, more oxygen. We wanna do it in a more humane way. We don't want people to have double cells, or have this dormitory-style living where we're watching them shower, or people are being distracted while we're trying to talk to them about how they can keep family connections, um, with people in the community, and how they can plan better financially when they get back into the community, or prepare for jobs, or get their OSHA certification. And so I think that for us, we have been part of this conversation, and we wanna keep being part of this conversation, and I believe that people with lived experience, this isn't a passion project, this is their life's work. And there is no way that they are going to let the decade that it has taken to bring us to this place where we are having this conversation without laughing, there is no way that they're going to let a design go forward that does not do exactly what they have purported that it is meant to do. The people with lived experience, that means...
No, no, I mean, I mean, it's a lot of faith for the people who are gonna have to take up this torch in the city government, for this administration and the next, but I hear you. All right, thank you. Thank you, that's a good thing, that we get all those things on the record. Michael, Michael, uh, Michael, Michael, Michael? No? Why did he come in? If someone sees him come in, just letting him know. Uh, Hosler Hernandez? Hosler Hernandez? No? Okay. Uh, Marcia or Marcia, uh, Barrow? Anybody? You should be... Close Fortune Society again, so we'll just put Fortune Society back, um, as a fourth, another fortune. Uh, Dee Johnson?
Here.
Again?
Here.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
I'm a Cub gardens resident for over forty years, one of New York City Gold Shield Detective, and New York City school teacher. I love this area, I care about this community, I care about all human beings, but the Department of Corrections, I have nothing that I can say, and that includes the fact that I actually have a family member who works for the Department of Corrections and sees the stuff that goes on in, and the stuff that you all will never see, how corrections officers get spinal meningitis and all kinds of illnesses because of conditions in Rikers, but that you're not gonna see, okay? But what we need here is proper planning. Yes, Rikers is not run properly, things are not being done properly, but rushing this thing through to dump it in Cub Gardens, spreading their incompetence over four boroughs is not the answer. I think there are several, there are many people speaking here who care about the condition, and they've got some very solid ideas, but I think everybody, they all should sit together and work together and make the time to plan this thing properly. But putting it in Cub Gardens, which is already overly congested, we have women's shelters, it's gonna be right next door to the women's shelter, they've gotta tear down the municipal arm that we just finished building, to build more parking for the staff of the Corrections Department and for the visitors, but for the taxpayers of Cub Gardens that don't have any place to park, can't even get a delivery to your partner building because the Corrections Office has parked illegally in front of our building along 83rd Avenue and all over Cub Gardens, and saturated by staff. But yet, what is being done for the residents? Where the taxpayers, we're here. We would like everybody to work together and to plan it together, but don't rush this thing through in ninety days, because yes, there's many, many, many injustices, but they need to be worked on together. We should be a cooperative effort, and dumping it in the, in the boroughs is not the answer. It needs to be properly planned, we need to spend our dollars on prevention so that the people are not in the jails in the first dark ways. We can't even teach, we don't even teach our children to sign their names right now. Why don't we look at spending the money on prevention and doing things, spending the money, okay, this part for prevention, this part for education, this part for seniors, this part for housing, and fix Rikers and Rikers. Not, you know, you wanna empty the place out, and what's gonna be built there? Some more condos, some more Hudson Hills, come on. I mean, there's, there are other interests that are going on there, but we need to work together, and we need not to rush this thing through, and we beg you, please talk to the council and ask them to find, to make the time to plan this thing better, and incorporate all these voices that we've heard today. Let's work together instead of against each other. Let's work together, talk, communicate, listen, but don't rush this through so that your private friends can make money off of this.
Thank you. Uh, Dominic, uh, who is it? Dominic? Okay, um, does the city wanna come up and just clarify? I do wanna acknowledge that the city has sat through this entire, uh, hearing, and I wanna thank them for that. No, 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 first of all, you, you are...
I thought you were ending it.
Yeah, I am, I am ending, there was no more speakers on the list, so would you like, I mean...
I would just like to address somebody.
You have to, really, I'm sorry, and then you gotta fill one of these things out after, but, all right? Oh, you're with the city, so yeah, oh, okay, yeah, 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 sorry, I thought I didn't have to be here in person.
No, I just wanted to say...
But you named one of the record?
See here, I'm from the mayor's office and the government, see here, I'm from the mayor's office and the government, and I just wanted to address something personal. Um, we are staff, educated people that have gone to school, college, to study our fields, and we are not minions. We work hard, we show up. You don't have to agree with us, you don't have to agree with the plan, but we have took the time to educate ourselves, me being a young black woman coming from a night of development, I can't sit and stand to be called a name like a minion. I am a black woman, educated, strong, standing in our power. My team, our team worked together, educated, strong, standing in our power to implement the plan. If you don't agree with it, I respect it, but I would not call you a name, and you would not, you would like not to be called a name.
Understood, understood. We, uh, we also wanna acknowledge the time and the effort, no matter what side of the issue we're on. The city administration, all of the folks that are staffing on the city level, um, and the groups that are here today that are testifying and speaking out, all the time and effort that has gone on in this, and we appreciate that very much. And we're gonna close the cover now, um, but we're gonna have two more people who are free to sit, settle, but I didn't know. Uh, Desmond from Ozon, Desmond, I don't know if Desmond, Desmond. And the last, and I wanted to close this out, is Vidal. Oh, that's for your part, okay, great.
Hey, how you doing?
You're closing out.
Oh, hey, so my name is...
So does the city have anything else they'd like to say?
My name is Vidal, we've gone, actually, uh, the weekend, actually, in Ozon Park with my partner, because I'm on gang pro, I actually can't move on at all. Um, but I, I definitely wanna say, I've been a part of the campaign for the last three years, um, you know, been organizing, talking to people about the campaign. I was that sixteen-year-old who was tried as an adult, um, reading the newspaper when I was detained on Rikers Island, thinking, no matter who, color, race, age, to figure out if they ever talked about the conditions that ever happened in Rikers, and it was never. This campaign is led by directly impacted people and family who've been impacted by Rikers. Because of the close Rikers Island campaign, people who've been impacted would never be here. Um, you know, as a person who was incarcerated sixteen, seventeen, and also incarcerated at nineteen years old, my first mission was to come home and actually educate people about closing Rikers. Um, in the last twenty years, when they talk about criminal justice and the conditions about what's happening in Rikers, we was never at the table, now we are at the table. I wanna educate people also, let's put our egos aside and make sure that if we talk about criminal justice and you're listening to people who have firsthand experience, the condition that are traumatized of Rikers Island, you need to hear from us. You need to let us lead you, you need us to let us, uh, be able to talk to you about what's actually happening. It's not about buildings, it's about conditions, it's about human beings, that we are in a place that people in communities that are underfunded, over-incarcerated, over police, are incarcerated on Rikers. It's not about a building size. If people are serious and wanna talk about building size and how to make it smaller, we did our research. We know that people are gonna be remanded, and conditions aren't important. Uh, if people are serious, uh, making sure they want the building size more smaller, we can talk. And it's not just about for us, building size, it's about conditions, about people who've been impacted, about making sure people are landed here in the first place. We have to think about this, guys. No matter who we are, what race we are, who we are, this is the most moment of time, as a human being, when we talk about caring about a human being, this is the time. There's no delay in this. This is coming from someone who was reaching out when I was sixteen years old, who was reaching out at nineteen years old, saying, "I wish someone spoke about Rikers Island." Human beings are dying, and it could be any yacht families. So this is the moment where as people, no matter where we from, or what part of history we from, this is the time. And I, when I get angry, or when I get mad, or how I'm talking like this, I was that sixteen-year-old, reaching out for help on Rikers Island, and didn't get it. Listen to us, talk to us, if it's about building size, listen to us. Let's get it smaller, let's work together, but don't tell us what it is, or what we want, or what is certainly of importance, you know. And the last thing I wanna say, you can't talk about criminal justice system without talking about the people who first experienced it, and we are the individual who has experienced Rikers Island. No more delay, so yes, with conditions, thank you.
So, uh, unless, no, well, thank you. Uh, unless the city wants to add anything, I'm sure I can make a closing statement if I can. So we've heard a lot of testimony today about the renovate, the reform that needs to happen in the criminal justice system, period, right? Whether, right now, if we're not talking about Rikers, stopping Rikers, or closing Rikers for a few years, I do believe there are major, major things that can be done on Rikers to make it a more humane system, but at the same time, I agree with the young man that just spoke, which is that, you know, we need to make sure we keep as a community or kids out of jail, and our young people out of the system as much as we possibly can. Um, but we need to absolutely figure out how to deliver services and not just replace Rikers, when other institutions that are not delivering the services that we need. Um, so I appreciate everyone's story, I especially appreciate, again, that the city-state to hear them, because I think it's very important. Um, and we do need to close Rikers, and we need to do it right as well, and so I thank you for your testimony. And remind everybody again, please, tell folks, and we will tweet it out, that if they would like to put in testimony, um, we're gonna at least have ten days at a minimum, uh, maybe fourteen, because two weeks from today, maybe, um, my, my view has to get in by July third, uh, we'll absolutely keep the, the hearing open, so that, uh, until two weeks, at least, ten days at least, maybe two weeks. All right? And it's at info@queensvp.org. Info@queensvp.org. Thank you to the activists, thank you to everyone. You're in a club. Next hearing, July eleventh, two thousand nineteen.